Good evening and welcome to the October 21st meeting of the East Point City Council. Madam City Clerk Roach, please.
Councilmember Shropshire.
Present.
Councilmember Freedley.
Present.
Councilmember Ziegler.
Present.
Councilmember Cummings.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Councilmember Butler.
Councilmember Martin Rogers. Mayor Holliday Ingram, we have a call.
Thank you so much. Our invocation this evening will be by Pastor Jamie Vernon of Tri-Cities Church, followed by the Pledge to the Flag. If you can stand, remain standing.
Before I pray, I wanted to thank the members of the churches that came out and prayed ahead of time on the front lawn out here. We prayed for you guys, so consider yourselves prayed for. Let's pray again. Father God, you told your people through your prophet Jeremiah to pray for the city they lived in, to pray for peace and prosperity. And God, may that be the move of our hearts tonight, no matter what's discussed and what's said, that we pray for the peace and prosperity, and we pray for unity too. And God, will you bless this meeting tonight? Bless each representative. We pray, God, that everyone will have their ears open as they speak their truth and their words, and we ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Sergeant at Arms this evening is Captain Robinson. Thank you. Oh, no, it's not.
Drake.
Captain Drake.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. See, I was talking as I was looking up, like, not Captain Robinson. Thank you, Captain Drake, for your service this evening. Before we get into our presentation, I just want to, in announcements, I want to make an initial announcement that the City of East Point will host a Hurricane Kane-Haleen Relief Drive there event. We've been really working because what we realized is if we had collected items, we needed to get them to Augusta. And so, we've been working and communicating, and Amazon is partnering with us to drive the items that we get during the drive down to Augusta, so we actually have transportation to ensure that the items get there. And so, the collection dates will start tomorrow, October 22nd through the 25th, so Monday through Friday here at City Hall, you can drop off items from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then here at City Hall on October 26th, from Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then you can also drop them off at any of our City of East Point fire stations from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily tomorrow through Saturday, so October 22nd through the 26th. And the specific types of donations may include blankets, first aid kits, personal hygiene items, toiletry, soap, lotion, dental, hygiene products, adult diapers, et cetera, baby supplies, diapers of all sizes, formula, baby wipes, baby wash, baby lotion, paper goods, paper cups, paper cups, plates, paper towels, paper utensils, laundry detergent, dish detergent, bleach, broom, mops and rags, trash bags, plastic totes, and pet supplies of dog food, cat food, and litter food, and kitty litter, I'm sorry. And so, that's not litter food. Sorry, y'all. Again, transitioning too fast, I gotta stay down on the paper. But this information will be on the city's website, will share it through our social media channels as well. I've been in communication with Mayor Johnson of Augusta, and they will be greatly appreciative. Although the storm was some weeks ago, they're still trying to recover, and there are a lot of people who lost a lot. And so, this will definitely go a long way, and so, however you feel like giving, donating, whatever you feel, we greatly appreciate it. And again, those are the dates and time, but that will be through this week. And we also want to thank Amazon for partnering with us to ensure that the items get from East Point to Augusta. The first presentation we have this night, I meant this night, what is wrong? Hold on, let me get a sip of water. Let me slow down. Let's see. The first presentation we have tonight is the East Point First Malaloo Church Blood Drive, and so, I want to invite Pastor Abrams from East Point First Malaloo Church. She is the new pastor at East Point First Malaloo. I think it's been about July, so a couple months. So, welcomed her to the city, and she, I met with her, and she shared some really important information as it relates to blood drives and the need and the efforts that their church is exploring as it relates to blood drives, and so, I invited her to come tonight to present to us and share the information with us. Welcome Pastor Abrams. Press, yep, there you go.
Thank you. Wow. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Holliday Ingram and the City Council members for this opportunity to address our community. As you said, I am Reverend Joya Abrams. I moved here in July, and I'm grateful to be now the pastor at East Point First Malaloo United Methodist Church. My parents, actually are East Point residents, they're here. And I'm here tonight as a neighbor and as a parent, asking for all of your help. I'm here to ask you to help East Point First Malaloo United Methodist Church to host a Red Cross Blood Drive at the church just down the street. My family and I donate blood partly because our 12-year-old son was born a preemie. He only weighed two pounds and 12 ounces when he was born. Premies are immature in every way, and they're not just little. Since they aren't ready to be living outside of their mommies, premies don't yet have the ability to grow red blood cells quickly enough to keep up with what their body needs. It doesn't help that their care at the neonatal intensive care unit also requires a lot of blood tests and surgeries, which also depletes red blood cells. And y'all, I keep saying red blood cells. Red blood cells are what make our blood red and carry oxygen throughout our bodies, and there's nothing else in the world, there's nothing artificial, that can replicate the work of a red blood cell in our bodies. So, donated blood is the only source for red blood cells. Our son Christopher, who's also here, received eight units of blood when he was in the NICU. He's 12 now, he's, hi Christopher. His life was saved through donated blood. So, that's my personal reason, my family's reason for donating blood. I'm here tonight because we are urging people to give, not only for babies like mine, but for people with sickle cell disease, which is the most common genetic blood disease in the United States. It most commonly affects people of African descent. Patients with sickle cell disease may rely on regular blood transfusions throughout their lives to prevent sickle cell complications such as organ and tissue damage, severe pain and strokes. Unfortunately, frequent transfusions can make finding compatible blood types more difficult when patients develop an immune response against blood from donors that's not closely matched to the recipient. These antibodies can lead to severe complications. However, what has been discovered, and I'm reading from the Red Cross's website, one in three African-American blood donors are a match for people with sickle cell disease. Why am I sharing all these things together? Well, neighbors, when I moved to this community and I was looking to schedule my regular blood donation in my new neighborhood, I realized that there were no Red Cross blood donation drives happening in the area south of I-20 and north of I-85. Zero. We know that this area is predominantly black, so our church decided to seek to address an issue through our space to be able to schedule a blood donation drive. But in order for the Red Cross to schedule a blood drive, they have to know that there's some interest first. They don't want to get all their people mobilized and then nobody shows up. Mayor Holliday Ingram has agreed to help us get signatures of intent, so we might host a blood drive just down the street for our community at the church. Now, if you will, I am a pastor, so I'm gonna theologize for just a moment. We who are followers of Jesus are called to love God and to love our neighbors as we love ourselves. Your blood donation can save up to three lives. That sounds like love to me. There are paper donation, there are paper interest forms at the fire department, public safety, and the mayor's office has agreed to have one as well. If you want to email the church to state your interest, please also do that, office@epfmumc.org, and provide us with your name and a contact number. Mayor Holliday Ingram and City Council members, thank you so much for this time to share, and thank you so much for your support.
Wait, wait a minute, come back, come back. One, thank you so much for sharing and presenting more information. We had a short conversation, but I didn't realize all the information that you just shared, and I wanted to make sure we shared with councils, so I don't know if there are any questions. I think it would be great if the city would co-sponsor or partner with East Point First Malaloo.
We would welcome that.
To have, host a blood drive. What that would mean is that it would still happen at East Point First Malaloo Church, but we could cross-promote, we could share the information and encourage people, or let people know about what is happening and when it takes place. And so, that's the ask or the opportunity before us tonight, and again, thank you Pastor Abrams so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
I'm gonna go to Councilmember Shropshire, Councilmember Mitchell, and then Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you, and I was going to ask if we could share it as well on our social media page to get people interested and to sign up, and it's very interesting that you brought up premature, because the Zetas reached out, and November is premature month, so they asked if we could turn the fountain purple on November the 17th for that day, so that, you know, if we can do that, to light up purple, to acknowledge that it is premature awareness month that day, November the 17th, and to get the information to the city partner with the church to do that and to get the information out there, and to get as many people to come out and to donate blood, to see what else possible that we could do to get people to come out as well and participate. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation and looking out for our community. Does a motion need to be made to co-sponsor this? Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we co-sponsor the blood drive?
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion?
One question.
So, let me go to Councilmember Cummings, just in case she has a discussion, and then I'll come, we'll take the comments on discussion.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Councilmember Mitchell, if you had anything further.
Oh, no.
We have enough discussion as well, so you can make any statements.
Thank you, Pastor Abrams, for your presentation. There was a lot of information, a lot of stuff that I did not know, just because I've never donated before, but I'm very much interested in doing that. How long does it take to give blood?
That depends on how quickly one bleeds. There's a preparation you need to do, you need to drink a lot of water the day before and the day of. It takes between 10 to 15, 20 minutes once you get on the table. There's a process by which they, you have a questionnaire you need to go through before you give, just to make sure you haven't been to certain countries recently or gotten a tattoo or piercing, how long ago that was. It's fine if you have, there's just a waiting period between that, and then they take your blood pressure, check your iron, just make sure that you aren't actually anemic, so it'll be a healthy experience for you. And then, once you get on that table, it's about 10 to 20 minutes, depending on how quickly one bleeds, but they won't let you stay there very long.
Okay, the only reason I was asking, and I know I may be putting the, was it cart before the horse, but maybe if we could do something, encourage employees, and I didn't know if we could allot, you know, some time, you know, you know, in the lunch hour or something, but I just didn't know how long that process is. I didn't want it to be three hours and then we got our employees and we're going to put blood today. So, maybe if it's something that we could do, you know, just to kind of do a big push, you know, for the city employees, so I was just wondering how long it took, but thank you.
Thank you.
And Pastor Abrams mentioned that they, the church had already reached out to the fire station and other departments, I think Parks and Rec, and Ms. Jessie also has a form to like encourage people to sign up. I think you only need 30 people interested, and so, if you say you're interested, it doesn't necessarily mean you're committed.
Correct.
This means you have an interest. So, I don't know if we have a form here tonight, maybe you can leave one out there and people might be able to sign up before they leave or while they're here, if they're so inclined, but it's just, they need 30 interested people, and then they can schedule an actual drive.
Correct.
Those are great ideas around encouraging, and also, the education piece. I think it would be good if, I know there's a flyer or something that we could, you know, highlight some, share some good information, like, not too much, but like, I wasn't aware of a lot of stuff you shared with us either, and so, think, you know, using it as a way to educate, so even if people aren't inclined, they're more aware.
Right.
Of an importance of blood drives and can support in a number of different ways. Councilmember Shropshire?
Thank you, and I was gonna ask the same question, and also, once we share it, to put what you have to do before you give blood, so people will be aware that they gotta drink plenty of water and be hydrated the next day to give it, so they won't get sick or faint or something like that.
Yeah, that's a good thought, too, to share, like, information, what it is, how long it generally takes, and what you have to do to help people make a decision as to whether or not they want to participate. That would be a good flyer.
One of my children asked me, so, does it hurt? And I said, well, it hurts when the needle goes in, similar to a shot, and then the pain goes away because you don't have nerves inside of your vein, so even for that question, yes, thank you. So, to prepare a little info booklet, we can do that.
Yeah, maybe if communications could work with the church and Pastor Abrams around creating the marketing materials, that would be helpful, info market material.
Infomatic or whatever you call it.
Yeah, infographic or something, yeah. Councilmember Ziegler?
Yeah, just on like the information piece, we may not need to reinvent the wheel, the Red Cross probably has information on the website that we can just, you know, go ahead and use.
Yes, and part of what I read was directly quoted from their website, so yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you so much, Pastor Reverend Abrams, welcome to East Point, and thank you for hitting the ground running and bringing such a critical opportunity and need to us so that we can partner and help support our community, so thank you.
Thank you, we love being partners. Have a good evening.
You too. Councilmember Shropshire, you mentioned premature awareness month.
Yes.
Not November 17, 2024, to light up City Hall and the water fountain.
Yes.
Do you want to make a motion on that?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the city lights up, light the fountain up purple as well as City Hall for premature month on November the 17th.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is status update on no-cost minor home repair program for seniors and veterans. Interim City Manager Jessie?
Madam Mayor and members of council, good evening. Janesa Elias is going to give you an update. The last time she presented, you asked for some additional information, and she has that information tonight.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Janesa Elias, Assistant City Manager for the City of East Point. At the last regular meeting, you all had two questions regarding participation in the program. I spoke with Ms. Jones with House Proud, who is one of the vendors who will be assisting us with the actual repairs on the homes. The first question you asked was how many people are on their waitlist. Right now, they have 49 residents that are actually on their waitlist. Forty-nine. So, House Proud, Ms. Jones is already reaching out to those residents to make sure they're still interested so that the eligibility and intake process can begin, and Ms. Jones and Mr. Johnson with Greenheart are working closely together to make sure that process goes well. The other question that was asked was the estimated cost. This is a rough, rough, rough estimate, so based on those 49 homes that she already has on the waitlist, her estimated cost was $289,000, and we've allocated $350,000 for the program. So, we're just gonna work with the waitlist.
Thank you for those updates. I cannot recall. I think we made a motion to approve when we did the vendors.
Yes.
To authorize the amount, and then this is bringing the information back to us around how the program will be rolled out.
Yes.
And so, it sounds like you are going to first work with the people on the waiting list to see and process that and see where we are as it relates to eligibility and still need.
That's correct. She's already reaching out, one, to find out if they are still interested. If they are, she's gonna also begin the intake process with them to determine their eligibility, because there's some income requirements and some other requirements that are necessary because we're using the federal dollar, so we have to stay within, you know, the income range that's prescribed, as well as some other items, especially dealing with veterans, there's some other documentation that's required that the homeowner would have to submit. So, House Proud has agreed to do all of that intake process, since these homeowners are already on their waitlist, and talking to Mr. Johnson with Greenheart, he is also amenable to that process as well.
Is there anything needed from us since we already have approved allocation of the funding for the project? I mean, this is operationally how it will roll out. Do we need a motion to approve the program for working with the people already on the waitlist, or, I don't know?
I think you actually did it at the meeting on the, on the 7th, to, for us to start with the people who are actually on the waitlist that House Proud has.
I know we had a discussion, but I don't think we did, I don't recall us doing a motion, but again, we've approved the program, this is operationally how it will roll out, and we need to do a motion to have the no-cost minor home repair program for seniors and veterans for the 49, starting with the 49 residents on the waitlist. Ms. Jessie, our attorney?
Madam Mayor, I believe the only thing that needed to be done is to provide you the how of rolling it out. You all, as I remember, approved to start with the people on the waitlist, and you just wanted us to verify the number because Janesa wasn't sure at the time, and to find out the next steps.
Okay. Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Based on what the interim city attorney has said, it sounds like the approval has already occurred, so no additional approval would be warranted at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Shropshire and Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. I don't, if you all say we did, I don't, I know we went back and forth about how the program was gonna roll out. I didn't, I don't think we actually said that we would start with the people on the list, because at the time, it was going to roll out and be a meeting, two meetings, at one, at Jefferson Park, to get people on the list. So, I think that's the conversation we had. I don't remember if we said we were gonna start with the people on the list, because at the time, we didn't know how many people was on the list.
So, I will say, yes, the initial plan was to do the two initial meetings, and then the discussion started about the actual waitlist that already exists. So, based on that discussion, I believe the consensus was, we would definitely start with the waitlist, depending on the number of people on that waitlist, and that estimated cost would determine if we even needed to do the community meetings, but, and I can say, based on the number of people on the waitlist and the rough estimate we have right now, we would cause ourselves more problems if we did the community meetings.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. Since we do have a rough estimate, were you able to contact everybody on the list and see if they still needed those services?
House Proud, these are actually House Proud's clients that are on the waitlist.
Okay.
So, Ms. Jones is actually reaching out to those people right now to determine, one, if they're still interested, and then if they are, she'll proceed with the intake eligibility process with them. And then, once we finalize eligibility, looked at the services they are requiring, then both contractors will do the inspection so we can get a good cost estimate for each of the properties that have been deemed as eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I do recall the discussion, and I do recall there being kind of a consensus in discussion, but not an actual vote.
No, it wasn't a vote.
We probably should, in abundance of caution, just go ahead and make that motion. Councilmember Shropshire?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we move forward with the, the home repair program for the, to move forward with the people that's already on the list, the seniors and the veterans that's already on the list.
So moved, is there a second? It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the no-cost minor home repair program for seniors and veterans starting with the 49 residents already on the waitlist? Indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shropshire, Rico Wade, street topper?
Thank you. I'm bringing this back because we ran into a situation. You can't put street toppers on street signs anymore. Being that the street signs are no longer in the ground, they're on top of the, on top of the red light, and unless you're gonna change a street name, you can't put it up there. So, the idea is to do a plaque now in honor of Rico Wade, so because we can't do the street topper, we're gonna just do a plaque, so that's where we are.
So, the previous motion that was approved was to put a street topper at Headland and Delo in honor of Rico Wade, but that's no longer a possibility, because street toppers aren't allowed, I think per the state, on those, the street signs that we have there. And so, I think in abundance of caution, because that was a previous motion, that if there's a motion to honor Rico Wade with a mural at Headland and Delo, because that would, is a little different from the street topper, and so, I think that's the point of the discussion tonight, to notify council of what happened with what has already been approved, and then just in abundance of caution to seek that approval for the mural in the area of Headland and Delo, I'll say, because I'm not sure exactly where.
That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor, so is it, we're doing a mural? Not a mural. Not a mural.
Not a mural, I'm sorry.
Not a mural. Madam Mayor, you got me all twisted up, man. Okay. So, you're talking about something like a stand and, you know? A plaque, that's it, yeah. Gotcha, okay. So, not a, not a mural. Not a mural. Madam Mayor, drink, drink some more water, because you're. Okay, well, that's fine, that's why she threw me with, I was like, what building you want to put it on? But, okay, yes, okay, that's fine. Yeah. Okay.
So, Shropshire, motion?
So, that's the motion, do the plaque because we can't do the street topper.
Motion to have a plaque.
Installed in the area of Headland and Delo.
Headland and Delo, mhm.
To honor Rico Wade, so you'd say motion on that?
Yes, that's the motion.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries. Oh, litter-free library week. Um, and so I actually didn't go by my office to pick up the proclamation, but we will be issuing a proclamation in honor of litter-free, um, library week. Little, not litter, and that wasn't me. Little, little free library week. Y'all, it's, I can't even blame it on Friday, it's Monday, it's the beginning of the week. I don't, I don't, yes, help me help you, I don't know. So, um, I, I will probably re- bring this back up in, in comments from council at the end cause I need to pull up my laptop. I can read it from there. Um, but wanted to share that with the community and we're part, glad to partner, um, with the organizations that promote little free library week. Um, and so that we can continue to get education everywhere, literally at corners and places throughout our community. And thank you to all of the residents who actually support and have popped up little free libraries. Um, because those are a great resource to our community as well. And they're lit, yeah, litter-free. They are litter-free, cause you could put them in a box. Yes. Um, wow. This is gonna be an interesting night. Next up, committee reports. Um, budget and finance committee will meet tomorrow. No, we met last week. Yeah, see, look, you're looking at me like, no, Mayor, get it together. Human, uh, human resources committee will meet this week. Um, and budget and finance is still looking at variances within the budget, um, as well as talking about our audits and budget calendar. And the human resources committee is looking at our, um, evaluating our direct reports, um, grievance policies, whistleblower policies, the information to make recommendations to, to council. Anything else from any of the committee members for either of those committees that you'd like to share at this time? Okay. Adoption of the council agenda, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Shropshire?
I have a question for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, consent agenda?
Oh, we did say we were gonna do that. Because we didn't have the, um, work session and so if we could go through the agenda items and determine which items we'd like to move to consent and Madam City Clerk, if we, I'm gonna try and keep track of the numbers, but if you can as well, and those before we approve the agenda, we'll, we will make the motion to adopt the agenda adding and list the items to the consent agenda. So let's go through item number, um, seven, eight, and nine we'll need to discuss. Item number ten, is there any objection to that item going to consent? Okay. Item number eleven? Any objection? Item number twelve? Any objection? Item number thirteen? Any, um, consent, any objection? Okay, item number fourteen? Item number fifteen? Any objections? Item number sixteen? Fast, oh, we need to, that was the one that we needed more information about how they were gonna select, um, the program. So let's discuss that one, I have a question to know. Sixteen, yeah. Item number seventeen? On seventeen? Okay. Item number eighteen? Okay. Nineteen? Okay. Twenty? Let's get it, that's for police. It, twenty-one? Okay, we'll discuss that one. Twenty-two? Twenty-three? Any objections? No objections. Number twenty-four? Number twenty-five?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, we would like to remove, uh, item twenty-five.
Okay. Um, that'll be included in the motion. Do you have a date? Well, we'll just let you, I'll put it on a future date. Um, twenty six, we'll have to discuss with legal, not sure if that's here in executive session, but we'll, we'll leave that one on the agenda. And so the motion to approve the agenda would have items number ten through fifteen, twenty-three. Yeah, ten through fifteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, on consent and then removing item number twenty-five.
Excuse me, Mayor, I also have number twenty for consent.
Oh, I circled it, yeah, I should've put C A, I'm sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
That, did I mess up any of those other ones? No, it was seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and then twenty. So it's ten through fifteen, then twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four on consent and remove item twenty-five. So we can get a motion to adopt the council agenda, moving items ten through fifteen, twenty, twenty-three, and twenty-four to the consent agenda and removing item number twenty-five.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is approval of city council minutes from the October seventh regular meeting of the East Point City Council, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Shropshire?
I make a motion that we approve the council, the council meeting from October the seventh.
So moved, is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public hearing. The first one is a zoning matter and the second is our, a budget amendment. So attorney Hartley, I'm going to have you read the zoning public hearing rule before we start at five and then before we start the public hearing for six, I'll have you read the other public hearing rule.
Thank you, Mayor. The rules related to public hearings for zoning matters. The pri- presiding officer will call a motion to open and close the hearing. The presiding officer or his, or her designee will introduce the proposed zoning amendment before the city council. Staff will then be called upon to present the planning commission's recommendation and summarize the staff's written report. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed amendment will then be provided an opportunity to address the council. The applicant of the proposed amendment, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning amendment will then be permitted to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. By majority vote, the council may increase the total time for speakers, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. There is, if there is more than one speaker for a side, the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of the allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must he, adhere to the rules of decorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify him or herself and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning decision under consideration, shall address remarks only to the council, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The presiding officer may refuse a speaker the right to continue if, if after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of decorum.
Thank you so much. Can we get a motion to open the public hearing on an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of East Point for Zero Dunlap Avenue rezoning with concurrent variances from R one A Urban Residential Zoning District to R T Residential Town Home Zoning District?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Are those opposed? The public hearing is now open. Ms. Jessie, I see Ms. Smith, um, at the podium, you have a brief overview from staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kimberly Smith, Planning and Community Development Director. Um, in reference to this case, um, address Zero Dunlap Avenue, case number two zero two four R Z dash zero zero one dash zero six. Um, the applicant is Restore Consulting Group LLC. Uh, Douglas Suber is the representative for the company. The current zoning of the property is R one A. The proposed zoning is R T, which is our residential townhouse zoning district. Um, the request is a rezoning from the R one A to R T to, um, develop eleven townhomes. There's also a concurrent variance associated with this application. Um, the variances are for, to increase the height, to reduce the front and rear yard setbacks. Um, again, this is a copy of our zoning map showing the property as Zero Dunlap. It is R one A Urban Residential. To the left of the property is city of East Point and those properties are zoned R three, which is our multifamily zoning district. This is a present, representation of the future land use map and this property has a re- a re- redevelopment neighborhood zoning district, uh, land use classification. In the redevelopment neighborhood, uh, future planning in this area, uh, the intent is to improve housing conditions to reduce the number of vacant homes and lots. Uh, these neighborhoods will include an assortment of housing types such as single-family, two-family, and multifamily. And some of the typical zoning districts in redevelopment neighborhood land use classification is R one, R L, R one A, uh, R T, which is our residential townhomes, R two, and R three. Um, this is a presentation of the proposed renderings, site plan, and layout of the site and a vicinity map. These are more renderings showing a decorative fence, um, enhanced landscaping, uh, some of the facade materials that are proposed along with the enhanced sign, entry sign to the development. These are more renderings of the proposal. Just go through those. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of the three-part concurrent variance associated with the rezoning from R one A to R T. The first part of the variance is to give relief, to reduce the minimum lot width from thirty feet to twenty-five feet. Part two of the variance is to grant the reduction in the minimum front and rear yard from ten feet to five feet. And the third part of the variance is to grant an increase in the maximum building height from thirty-five to forty-eight feet in height. Furthermore, the planning commission and staff recommends approval of the rezoning request itself and the concurrent variances with the following condition. Condition number one, applicant must submit HOA covenants to include all smart townhome features included and presented in the planning commission and city council meetings by the applicant. Uh, those features include exterior materials, interior features, and other amenities. Condition number two, the applicant may only build at maximum the proposed eleven townhomes. Condition number three, ensure that building elevations vary in style and design composed as depicted in the work session presentation on August eighth, twenty twenty-four and September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four planning commission public hearing. There's an attachment associated with it, that's included in the ordinance that was submitted. Condition number four, townhomes must have thirty-five to forty percent transparency. That's to adhere to the size of the windows on the property as it's developed. Condition number five, provide staggering patterns of townhomes to ensure corner units are brick. Condition number six, the city of East Point Planning and Community Development Department will maintain architectural oversight of the development. Condition number seven, um, the project must provide the following proposed amenities. A masonry wall surrounding the perimeter of the property and decorative security entry gate with community subdivision sign, enhanced landscaping, benches, architectural lighting, fire pits, bike racks, underground stormwater detention, facility control management in accordance with section ten dash one one zero two one through section ten dash one one zero two three. A walking trail, playground, and a dog park as depicted in the presentation. Condition number eight, prior to the approval of a preliminary plat, the applicant shall follow the administrative procedures pursuant to section four two zero zero seven, administrative procedures for abandonment of a citywide right-of-way lanes and alleys. And condition number nine, the applicant shall consider and provide an alternative egress and ingress for proposed development, allow access into the development from a city of East Point Road and shall adhere to any buffer requirements in accordance with the city and state codes. That's the conclusion of our presentation.
All right, thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Anyone desiring to speak in favor of the, um, ordinance to amend the zoning map, please come forward at this time. Anyone desiring to speak in favor, please come forward at this time. Anyone desiring to speak in favor? Press the mic, press the button on the mic.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, city council. I am in favor of this project. My name is Douglas Suber. I am the owner of Zero Dunlap Avenue. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about, um, the smart home community. You can keep going. You can skip, skip that. The name of this project is called English Ivy. It's approximately thirty-one hundred to thirty-eight hundred square feet. Has four to five bedrooms, three, three, three and a half bathrooms, two-car garage, four stories. The exterior material of the homes will be a mixture of fiber cement and or brick, known for durability, fire resistance, and low maintenance. The interior of the homes will have drywall throughout the dwellings with ten-foot ceilings. The flooring will have seven-inch LVP to give it a clean, finished look. The kitchen will have quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, microwave, wall-mounted stainless steel oven, thirty-six inch electric cooktop, thirty-six inch stainless canopy, wall-mounted hood, stainless steel undermount basin sink, dishwasher faucets with pull-down spray, LED recessed lighting, tile backsplash, and sleek, modern cabinetry with upper crown molding. The owner suite will have a bathtub with quartz countertop, tiled. tiled walk-in shower, double vanity, and tile flooring. The secondary suites will include modern bath fixtures and faucets, shower and bathtub combination, quartz countertops, and tile flooring. There will be several amenities offered in the East Point residence of English Ivy. Some of the amenities include a masonry wall surrounding the perimeter of the property, enhanced landscaping, benches, architectural lighting, fire pits, bike racks, underground stormwater detention facility, walking trail, playground, and a dog park. In an event of an emergency, fire engines will be able to make a required 20-foot radius turn of the hammerhead, which is shown on the revised site plan. A hydrant will be installed between units four and five, and six, I'm sorry, five and six. Each unit will be separated by a two-hour firewall, and will have NPT sprinkler systems, fire alarms, and carbon monoxide sensors installed. Utilities will be underground. These will be sewer, water, electrical, cable, and internet. An underground stormwater facility will be built to prevent runoff from Dunlap Avenue onto English Lane. By building the facility underground, it will create additional green space for the community with amenities. Sanitation will have access to the trash area. Also, there will be additional perpendicular parking for guests located on the property next to Unit 11. East Point will be the mun, will be the municipality of first responders, which will include EMT, law enforcement, and fire department. On July 31, 2024, I spoke with Ms. Carr, who was the Office Manager and Administrative Assistant to Police Chief Shawn Buchanan, and was told that East Point will be the first on the scene in any event of an emergency, despite English Ivy's ingress and ingress location, which is designated on English Lane, which was our previous conversation, our previous meeting. According to Section 10-2069, the property owner, Restore Consulting Group, will apply for a conservation easement, which will be dedicated to the HOA and or property management firm prior to the issuance of an LDP. The HOA fee per resident will be approximately $300 to $400 per month. These homes will debut at a starting price of mid to upper 500s and will incrementally increase. Keep going. Keep going. The other way. Here you see where sewer and water will, there's connectivity on Dunlap as well as West Ferris and La Rose. So we have two locations for that. This is pretty much a breakdown of what the smart homes will consider, will be, will be built on property. I just want to thank you for, for everything and calling me back. And I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. This is the public hearing part, so they're not questions during this part, but after this, when we open up for discussion and possible action, there may be questions at that time. Anyone else desiring to speak in favor? I'll need you to clear the mic space. So, once we get through with the public hearing, I have to finish calling anybody else who wants to speak in favor. Then I call people who might be in opposition, and then we will open the floor, close the public hearing and open the floor. Anyone else desiring to speak in favor? Anyone desiring to speak in opposition to the request to amend the official zoning map for Zero Dunlap Avenue?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Richard Pierce. I'm at 2022 English Lane College Park. I also have a property on Ben Hill Road. I'm in opposition of the property at Dunlap Avenue. Apologize, I'm probably going to read some of this. My opposition to the project is due to the negative environmental impact that clearcutting of the property, major topographical grading and disturbance of the Camp Creek watershed will have in East Point and downstream into College Park and beyond. The site plan that you saw still pointed to English Lane. It's outdated and does not reflect the location of the newly proposed driveway from the west side of the property approximately 450 feet north to West Ferris Avenue. It crosses Camp Creek in 100 foot of floodplain. I'm hoping that the plan will be abandoned due to item Section 1, Number 9, which says, an ordinance that you're going to vote on tonight that requires a reassessment of the property access due to watershed buffers, which the driveway would violate. I assume then that the only alternative is to open the property onto Dunlap and Vesta. One way to be certain of this would be to deny rights of the lacrosse street right-of-way to the developer. I'm assuming that that doesn't come before this body, but I have a kind of rhetorical question. If he does apply for the La Rosa property rights, would that come back before zoning so that he could be cleared of watershed and buffer requirements? There is also an unresolved legal matter regarding this, an existing driveway, that several of the proposed townhome units encroach on. The driveway has been in its current location since the year 2000 and uncontested by any landowner. This sets up a prescriptive easement claim by the current driveway owner. The developer has stated in every zoning meeting that we've had that he would contact the owner about this driveway, but in the four months since the application has been issued, he has never contacted the property owner, Mr. Garcia. Myself and fellow residents of College Park will be watching the development of this property closely to make sure that all legal claims, city and state requirements are satisfied before the first tree is ever cut down. We don't want to see destruction of the habitat and then find out later that the property is unbuildable. Our request is that you vote no on this project due to the many legal, site, and regulatory challenges. Thank you.
Anyone else desiring to speak in opposition?
Greetings, Mayor, Council folks. My name is Ryan Kelly. I'm over on 2041 English Lane. I've been to all of these meetings with the zoning committee, and it seems almost as if now that, since I don't live in East Point, I don't have a say in this. But do any of y'all live within, I don't know, 100 yards of Vesta Lane or Cloverhurst? Okay, well, I do. My property is right on the East Point line. And, you know, I go to, go to sleep every night with my kids listening to the gunshots. And, you know, we, I have a lot of stake in there. You know, I want to be helping the people who are screaming for help too. All I can do is call 911. And the blighted areas over there are pretty bad. I don't see anything about these smart homes that are going to fix any of that, although he is erecting a wall against his neighbors. Seem to me these smart homes aren't very smart at all. But I will say this, that the creek that comes through there, Camp Creek, it goes through my backyard. And my children, I have seven of them, all of which I'm supporting on a single-income military paycheck. We're homeschooling them, I won't go into that. But they have to go out and clean up all the garbage that comes through from East Point down Camp Creek into my yard. And a lot of it originates in Mr. Suber's property that he's owned for two years. It's filled with garbage and trash, and it's completely left disarray. I'd say someone who leaves their property like that, if you can say anything about his past, you can see, well, maybe you can make some predictions on how he'll handle things in the future. And honestly, I don't know what past he's got with creating any property, developing any property. What has he built? Last time he was speaking to you, there was nothing that he's built. So he's got a lot of promises. He's got graphics up here, and he has buildings built on top of a prescribed easement of a driveway of one of my neighbors. He won't even speak to him about it. And yet, you're making decisions based on graphics that he cannot build without ripping up the man's driveway, which I doubt that's going to happen. You know, I've, I've, I really don't know if I have any, any, anything that's going to come from y'all to help me with this. It seems like the decision may already be made, and in my mind, perhaps I could just say, hey, do it, so you'll go against it. All you really have to do is not vote for changing the zones. The zones are there for a reason, and this is a perfect property for, for building some single, single-family homes with yards for kids to play. But if you look at that area, what's going on now? You have a lot of high-density housing, and there's people that are too close together. There's a lot of violence over there. And I, you know, I work over at the Signal Command Building and 335th on Dolphine Street, and I've, I braved the drive-by shootings, and honestly, I wear a bulletproof, bulletproof vest to work because I know this, that these people are too close together. So, yeah, bring in the single home. That's what it's, that's what it's zoned for. It's what it's been zoned for. Probably should stay that way unless somebody would speak, you know, for it, other than the man who doesn't even live there. And he says, he'll live there, oh, it sounds great, right? He's going to live in the model home, I got it, but he doesn't live there. I do. And so does he and everyone else. We've had several people, everybody on the street has called in about this and voiced opposition, and not one single person that lives in East Point has said anything in favor of this, no one. I don't know why this continues, but it does. Mr. Garcia, I, so, I think that at least he should have the respect to at least be spoken to about his property having something on your screen. You know, where somebody's already talking about building something on the man's driveway without even speaking to him, and it's already here for you to vote on it. It doesn't seem right to me. And really, all of this looks really good. Done at $500, $600,000 townhomes, right? With the underground retention pool. It's going to have the quartz countertops and the crown molding and everything else. But I promise you, whatever sounds too good to be true generally is. So, you know, really, I ask that you don't rezon anything. Maybe the motion should be to deny. Or just, just abstain. Doesn't it take a quorum to vote? You say vote, and it should at least be a majority. Just don't, don't vote at all, and that would, that would help us. Anyway, so have mercy on me. I'm asking you really from, I'm pleading on you. Don't change these zones. I bought this house, I want a safe place for my family, and it's getting to where we have nowhere left to go. So, and then really, neither do the deer have any place to go. You cut down the trees, where are they going to go? The trees have been there to keep the place cool for us. It's, it's, you know, I don't know. If you would go down there, you would see the peaceful tranquility of the area, and you're seeing what you're voting on will destroy it, and it will replace it with more of the exact same problem you're trying to fix. So maybe some of that blighted area that's already there, the buildings are nailed up, the windows are nailed up, nobody's living there. Maybe the city could condemn some of that and give that to them. And Mr. Suber could, could build these, these townhomes in places already zoned for, for that type of stuff. Anyway, I'm looking at clock. I guess y'all got tired of hearing what I have to say. But if it means anything to you, I'm begging you, please have mercy on me and my family and my neighbors, and vote no on this project. Over.
Anyone else desiring to speak in opposition to the project? I meant to the rezoning. Anyone desiring to speak in opposition? Can you get a motion to close the public hearing? It's been moved improperly, second in any discussion.
Discussion.
On the closing of the public hearing?
Mm-hmm. Do the applicant get to rebuttal?
He didn't reserve time for rebuttal. Councilmember.
No.
It's a public hearing, so after we finish the public hearing, we can do a motion, open the floor for a discussion of possible action, and then, yeah. Any attorney, Hartley? There wasn't a request to reserve time for rebuttal, so, okay. All those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Can we get a motion to open the floor for a discussion of possible action on item number five? Third second. It's been moved improperly, second in any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Kimberly, question. Ms. Kimberly, so the infamous driveway easement, have we, and I'm assuming the owner is Mr. Garcia, have they spoken with, I mean, I don't know. I mean, this is a statement that they're, they're making about the driveway. So if we did approve it, would there be an issue? There's going to be an issue that's going to come up with him building on his driveway?
I wouldn't be at liberty to speak on that. We're here for the zoning petition. Yeah, I wouldn't be able to speak on it. I don't, I don't have any information on that.
Okay, but the thing is, if we voted and we approved it, he moves forward, but then if the property owner comes and says, you can't do anything because you don't have permission to, you know, to, to build or do whatever on my property. So should we not have that cleared up first, or?
The petition that he put forward this evening is to rezon the property, and that's what action needs to be taken. In reference to land disturbance, land disturbance would come through a separate process. So if any issue comes up in reference to the development of the property, disturbing the land, property disputes, that's handled through the land disturbance process, through the plan review process. It wouldn't be taken up prior to the property being rezoned because right now it's, it's zoned R1A.
Okay. Okay, got that. My next question is, I, I actually drove and went over there and looked at it. So if I'm coming on Dunlap, I know there are existing apartments on the left side. His property is on the right.
Correct.
I saw the huge wooded area, and there's a huge, it's a drop, it's a drop-off.
Correct.
So you, you have to build all of that up? All that stuff has to be built up and then built upon, or?
That, again, is land disturbance. It would deal with engineering. The property owner and developer, they, that would be up to them, how they design the property. If they need to build up the property, that would be something that their engineer would handle at that time. And it's outside of the zoning.
Okay. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to understand it because I'm not a builder, so I don't know, so I'm just asking these questions. But if I purchase a property, I want to build something on it, I need to have something done, some, some zoning and stuff changed. But I need to know if I'll be able to even do it in the first place if they aren't going to let us, you know, if I can't build up, if I, if I have to build on somebody's property. Because I'm assuming if Mr. Garcia says it's a hard no. But I mean, we've gone now, we've rezoned this property. We, we, we've rezoned all this stuff, and then no one can do anything with it, so. But I'm assuming this is just a process that we go through. So if he buys it, and then if it goes through the land disturbance people, and they say no, then he's just...
If there's some type of land or property dispute between two property owners, that would be a civil case, and it will be outside the city's purview, if that's what you're asking.
All right, I'm good now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Attorney.
I have a question.
Hold on just a moment, Councilmember Mitchell. Attorney Hartley, I think what Ms. Smith is attempting to do is to ensure that the rezoning application isn't, that we don't create challenges or issues if we're considering something outside of it. But we're in a discussion of possible action on it. So I don't know from a legal perspective, if you could kind of help us thread that needle to address what Councilmember Cummings is asking, from an explanation of how it works, not to necessarily confound the rezoning process, but help us thread that. not to necessarily confound the rezoning process, but help us thread that needle if we can. If not, we can move forward.
Mayor, I think staff's explanation of the process is correct. What you are being asked to do is make a legislative decision on whether or not it is appropriate to rezone it from one residential zoning classification to a different residential zoning classification. So is it, is it appropriate from a use standpoint to put townhomes here versus whatever's allowed in R1A, single-family homes, or whatever's allowed under your zoning ordinance? The additional issues that have been raised as it relates to prescriptive easements or driveways or topography or those kind of things are apart from and are not really for consideration for you as to whether or not the use is proper. So your focus is the use proper and should, which zoning classification is correct. The other issues are issues that will have to be addressed in the future certainly and could ultimately affect the ability of the owner to develop their property. Could it be cost prohibitive? Whether they chose to make that determination before bringing it to rezoning, which is what a lot of developers will do, they'll hire engineers up front to look at the topography. You'll often see site plans and development plans that are submitted that actually have topo lines on them so that folks know upfront how much dirt they're going to have to move, either bringing in dirt or moving dirt around or all the rest. But that is not required from a zoning standpoint, and apparently this developer has not chosen to do it in that manner, and that's okay. But those are definitely issues that will be addressed in the future, and if you have other questions, I'm happy to address those.
That clears up a lot of stuff. Clears mud. Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yeah, so along the same lines as Councilwoman Starr, I do have my concerns, and they brought up some, they seem like they're valid. And before you leave, I did have a question. So the plan in the zoning, they did recommend that we, what was the recommendation?
Approval with conditions, with nine conditions.
Did you take all of these things into consideration before you approved it? And then, and does this include the new driveway that's going to be put in? Have I heard that correctly?
Which driveway?
So during the presentation, it was brought to our attention that, I think even last time, if I remember correctly, he was going to put in another driveway?
Are you talking about the entrance into the property?
Yes, I'm sorry, entrance, sorry.
The applicant proposed an entrance that is from East Point. It does not come off of English Lane, which is the City of College Park entrance that was proposed initially. So he changed the entrance.
Okay. Let me say it's not English. Okay, and then are we in compliance? Is this construction, would I be in compliance with all laws? I guess that's my other question, because some concerns are brought up.
From a zoning perspective.
So City Attorney Hartley, if you could respond to that again. I think the challenges there in the, during the public hearing, there were a lot of non- zoning issues raised and suggestion that those should be addressed by this council tonight. So question is legally cannot be done. I think that goes to Councilmember Mitchell's question of the legality of what we're doing, and again, kind of threading the needle of what this process is and what it is not, and when legally those things are addressed, and whether or not those are things that this council would address or would be addressed administratively or through court proceedings or through real estate transactions as it relates to easements and those things.
Those are matters that would be addressed outside of the zoning action. Those would be addressed in the development stage. So when an applicant wants to pull their building permit or their development permit, they have to submit certain documentation for the city to review. So if there are state waters on the property, there are state named buffers, additional stream buffers, they would have to show it.
State waters on their site plan, and they cannot build within the stream buffer. If they wanted to build within the stream buffer, then they would actually have to come back to you on the stream buffer issue at least and request a variance to be able to build in the stream buffer, or they would have to redesign their plan so that they're not in the stream buffer. So that would be handled at the development stage. There could be the opportunity that if there is an issue with the stream buffer, that that would actually come back before council. That's not being addressed tonight. The only thing that's being addressed tonight is the land use portion of the decision. So there could be some additional items that they might have to come back to the council on in the future, but some of the other items, they may not have to come back to the council on in the future. Those would just be handled at a development and staff level because I've heard some different issues that present kind of different, like the driveway easement is not something that the city council would ever get involved in. But if there is a stream buffer issue, that is definitely something the council could get involved in because if they want to encroach in that stream buffer, there's only certain things that staff can do administratively. The rest would have to come back before the city council as a request to have a variance to their stream buffer. So it's kind of hard to give a definitive answer because it just depends on which piece of it is involved. But those are things that would come through the development phase that would either come back to you if they needed to, or staff would just handle in the development phase.
Thank you. So I think all this is pertinent information if we're going to vote on this, if that makes sense, because we don't want to rezone it and then not be able to build on the land further down the line.
Yeah, and again, to keep the integrity of this rezoning and potential challenges, Attorney Hartley is sharing with us legally what we can consider in this zoning decision versus those things that cannot be considered and what would be done later. And it's extremely important, given the litigious nature of zoning, that we thread this needle very carefully and make sure that we are not putting ourselves in a position for future litigation. Any other questions?
Are you? Thank you.
Councilmember Freely.
I think I already know the answer to this. I think I should, I'm going to withdraw my question because I think we just sort of answered it. I was going to ask if there was somewhere on one of the maps that was presented that would show this sort of driveway easement dispute, but it sounds like we should not pursue that any further in this context. Attorney Hartley, is that correct, or?
Right. I believe that is a development issue and also a private party issue, that if the person has a prescriptive easement, then he would have to seek to enforce that easement civilly. That's not something that the, an easement between two private property owners is not something that the city would enforce. That would be something that the owner would have to enforce through Fulton County Superior Court.
Understood. Thank you. And just one question for staff. The entrance, the egress, ingress, that's settled. That was agreed to by the developer. Is that correct?
I didn't get it. Do you have it?
Either or.
Yeah, to our knowledge, the applicant did agree to an entrance that is going to be from East Point, the City of East Point Street, and this is a display of what he has proposed. And also, we placed it as a condition as well.
Mayor Ingram, you asked if there was a way that I can come up with some new renders and create a different entrance and show that, and I did so. So what you're looking at right now is LaRose, which is an abandoned road right now, not being used. My goal was, or my goal is actually to build a road there, and of course, to turn it over to East Point. It'll be a brand-new road. It'll be connecting from West Ferris and LaRose, and it'll run all the way through 100% East Point. This has no interference with College Park. This is not a College Park project. The ingress and egress is not College Park. It is 100% East Point project. That is a cost that I would have to incur. But again, I believe in this project so much, I am willing to do so. So that is, that is a view. That's actually the abandoned road that would be built. You can see it from that side as well. Man, you have another view. Of course, that's what it would look like at night. It'll be all lit at night.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation for the second time, for coming back with the updates. I feel like we've had this conversation before, most recently when we dealt with the townhomes over at Lakeside Preserve. And these were some of the same questions. How many residents, those 30-plus residents that came out and spoke against those townhomes being built in their community? And it's not that they didn't want them, it was because of they were townhomes, not homes. So this is kind of like the same thing that we're going through. These are more high-end than what those were, or you consider them, you can say they're the same. But these are the same questions that those residents had. They shared the same concerns with their neighborhood. So I don't see a problem with what he's going to build, or like the attorney said, if there is anything far as the stream, that would have to come back. If I heard correctly, that would have to come back to council if you're going to make any changes or do anything to that. So it's basically the same thing.
Any further discussion? We're on discussion and possible action, and I'll say my comments till after council makes decisions as to how they're going to move, but this is deja vu. So there is, before us, an ordinance, a request to amend official zoning map, City of East Point for Zero, Dunlap Avenue, zoning and concurrent variances from R1A, Urban Residential Zoning District, to RT, Residential Town Home. Council has a couple of options. There was concerns about whether more information is needed. Those questions probably should happen offline or have staff share whatever information people feel they need prior to making the decision as it relates to its relevance. That would, in order for that to happen, it would be a motion to defer. And then if council wants to move forward tonight, there is, this is an ordinance, so there would be, need to be a motion to waive the first reading, which has to be approved by two-thirds vote of, I believe, those present. Can you pull that up for me really quickly regarding waiver of the first meeting? I know it is two-thirds vote. And then if that motion passes, it would be adoption of the ordinance. So those are the options before council. Trying to remember what the waiver of first reading requires. I know it's two-thirds, but I can't remember. If it's those present or in the time of council.
It says, "No less than two-thirds of the council members present at any meeting of the council duly convened at which quorum is present." So it's two-thirds of the council present.
The, I guess it's two options. Option two, taking action tonight, has two steps, and so I still don't desire.
So the first thing is to waive the first reading, correct?
Yes. If there is desire to take action tonight.
Yes. I make a motion to waive the first reading.
Question, discussion.
So let me see if there's a second on that, and I'll come to you for discussion.
Okay.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion. The ordinance says two-thirds, that's six votes.
Two-thirds of those present, so it's five. That would be four.
And if we don't waive the first reading tonight, then the most, then it would go to the next council meeting.
Correct. Any further discussion? Councilmember Mitchell.
What we able, so I know we asked a lot of questions tonight, so you're saying that can't be considered, and we can't ask for that information?
So I think the Attorney Hartley has provided some legal advice tonight, and so, but if there are questions or whatever of staff, I mean, you can ask those offline, but there's also what can be considered at this stage and what is for later, even if those questions are asked. I mean, on any item, you can ask staff questions.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Sorry. Councilmember Shropshire? Councilmember Freely? Councilmember Ziegler?
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell? Mayor Holiday?
So is it, am I included in the count?
You don't vote, Mayor.
I vote only if there's a tie. Correct. Okay.
All right. Mayor Holiday, the motion passed.
Now, let me ask you this, because there's also the charter provision that requires five votes for anything to pass by this council. And this has come up on another item, and so I probably should have just deferred to you because the city attorney said that the charter requirement of five votes affirmative for any action by this council doesn't, cannot be superseded by. Like, it says it takes five to vote to approve any item of council. That's in the charter.
So Mayor, the charter is the highest governing document of the city, so you cannot adopt an ordinance or rule or regulation that would be in conflict or be less than the city charter. So if you have a rule that might otherwise allow something, still the city charter is going to govern. So if the city charter has a required, a minimum requirement of five votes, then the charter is going to take precedent over your other rule or ordinance.
To that, two zero six, quorum in voting. Attorney Hartley.
The language says at the end, "Any ordinance, resolution, or motion." So the five-vote requirement is not just limited to an ordinance or resolution. So in this situation, it's a motion to waive the first read, so the motion would require five votes under the charter in order to pass.
What was the vote again, Madam City Clerk?
It was four one, so the mo- It was four one, so the motion failed based off of what Attorney Hartley said.
So then that means this item would go to the November 4th agenda? At that time, there wouldn't be a need for the first reading. Um, I guess we have it tonight. Do I read the ordinance tonight? The title of the ordinance tonight?
Tonight, you would read as your first read? Since the waiver of the first read did not pass, then it goes to your next meeting, your next regular meeting for the second read and final action by the city council.
And what constitutes the first read?
Um, I think hearing the item, reading the title, you don't have to read the full ordinance in order to have the first read.
Okay, so is I just read the title of it? Okay. Um, for the first reading, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of East Point for Zero Dunlap Avenue rezoning with concurrent variances from R1A Urban Residential Zoning District to RT Residential Town Home Zoning District. And then Madam City Clerk, this would go on the agenda as an agenda item for council action on November 4th. Alrighty. Next up is public hearing on fiscal year 2025 budget amendment, number one.
I am asking Shannon Golden to come up and, uh, present the budget amendment, uh, tonight.
Can we get a motion to open the public hearing? Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now open if we can start with the presentation from staff.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Shannon Golden, interim finance director. And to my left, I have Ms. Elizabeth Cartwright. She is our new budget manager. She comes from Savannah, Georgia, uh, the city of Savannah and Rincon. Tonight, finance is going to, um, present this budget amendment. And in this budget amendment, we have revenues from, uh, insurance proceeds as well as fund balance that's going to, um, for revenue purposes, uh, funded expenditures for, uh, new physicians. Um, these departmental physicians are for the communications department. We have the, uh, graphic designer for the communications department. We have a legal assistant for the legal department. And finance is requesting a senior accounts payable position. And the remainder of funds will be transferred to capital projects. Uh, this is budget neutral for the positions. Uh, we were able to cut some of our budget back to make sure that we are able to accustom, uh, for the, for the, uh, positions. Next slide. In our condemned fund, which is our capital, um, compensated asset, assets, I'm sorry. Uh, we're taking fund balance from there to, uh, purchase or, or finance 10 new police vehicles, uh, for daily operations. In our restricted grants fund, we have new grant awards. Uh, one is the E M, E M L I grant, which is our Economic Mobility Leadership Institute, uh, that's, uh, watered through the African-American Mayor Association. And our second grant that we're, uh, increasing in our revenues in grant fund is from the EPA, uh, the Environmental Protection Agency for our water and sewer in the amount of 1.6 million. Uh, the E, E M L A grant will fund OIE, um, operations. That's our Office of Equity Inclusion. Uh, the EPA grant, again, uh, for water and sewer, the water and sewer treatment plan, capital projects. For our capital projects fund, uh, we have several, um, funding resources, uh, again, that transfer in from the general fund as well as our restricted grant fund, which is opera funds. And our capital projects fund balance of 1.8 million. And what this does is it's gonna, um, fund these expenditures for these capital projects for the following departments, uh, legal, uh, office and bathroom renovations. Procurement also has warehouse and office renovations. Uh, fire department is renovating fire station number three as well as fire station number five. They also have bay doors as well as a fire engine that they're trying to, uh, purchase for the fiscal year. Our police department, uh, are asking for laptops. Um, also, they have, uh, they need precinct furniture for the Brett's location as well as the Washington Road location. Our planning and zoning, um, is trying to finish up, uh, the kiosk installation from 24. So they're rolling those, uh, funds over to finish up that project. And our Parks and Recreation Department is also, uh, has capital projects for the center and Brookdale Parks. Uh, electric fund, um, are, are using MCT proceeds from MEAC. Uh, that was approved by council, uh, in the previous year. But those funds weren't, um, uh, requested until this fiscal year. So those revenues will be recognized in this fiscal year to, um, to fund the expenditures for the capital projects related in site improvements, transformer purchases, and materials. So in this budget proposal, uh, we're taking, um, our budget, a grand total of 209,965,678, and adding, uh, revenues of 8.5 million to increase our budget to two point, I'm sorry, Questions in regards to the budget amendment?
Not during this part. We'll come back in a minute. Um, this is a public hearing on the FY 2020, fiscal year 2025 budget amendment, number one. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the amendment? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor to the amendment, first budget amendment for fiscal year 2025? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the first budget amendment for fiscal year 2025? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any opposition? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Yes, Councilmember Shropshire?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Some, it's been, it's seconded. Some moves second, it's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, is there a motion for discussion of possible action can be made at this time to have for a discussion? Um, or if there's action gonna be taken, it would be the motion to waive the first reading?
Madam Mayor? Uh, make a motion that we waive the first reading?
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. I need to see one thing. Okay. The ordinance, um, for the budget amendment is titled, an ordinance by the city of council, the city of East Point, Georgia, to amend the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, to provide for an effective date and for other purposes. Is there, um, any action on the adoption of the ordinance? Is there any motion on the, from Shropshire?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the, um, FY 25 budget amendment, number one.
Properly seconded, that we adopt the ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2025 budget for the year ending June 30th, 2025. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, ma'am. We have four public comments this evening.
Okay. Chapter 2, section 2 dash 2002 BB, Rule 28. The public may speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Speakers must complete a comment form prior to the start of the meeting. Subject may include any subject of choice. There will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Speakers that have signed up to speak may give all or part of their time, up to three minutes, to another speaker for a total of six minutes of speaking time. Speakers may address the council only once during this time of the agenda. Speakers must identify themselves and their address prior to speaking. Questions from the speakers may not be addressed during the public speaking section of the agenda. East Point residents will have priority over other speakers. There will be a total of not more than 60 minutes for the public speaking section of the agenda. Speakers may only address the presiding officer. Speakers shall observe all rules of the quorum. No debate, disrespect, or obscenity shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the foregoing. Madam City Clerk, you can call the first speaker.
Alright, up first we have Anitra Mathis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Um, my name is Anitra Mathis. I stay at 2628 with Valley Drive. And I'm here today as a taxpayer, asking for your help. I have a special need grandchild. And in my yard is a storm drain that has opened up, deteriorated. It's about four feet wide. And I have called East Point and my neighbor, it's on my property line. And my neighbor, property that it's on, is a senior. He has some challenging medical problems, which I will say. And I'm afraid for his safety also. Also, I'm afraid for my grandchild's safety because he's special need and he's always running. And the hole get bigger and bigger every time it rains. Um, his sister usually try to help him out. They have put in several complaints to the city. They keep telling them it's not his problem. They went in and did an estimate, want him to do exploratory, uh, repairs, which is gonna run over 40 to 60,000 dollars. He's on a fixed income. And this hole sits at my property line. I have some pictures. You wanna pass it over? I put up a rope, a barrier around it because it deteriorates every time it rains. The hole get bigger and bigger. So I need some help. I need someone to try to do something to help before something happens. So that's the reason why I'm here. So also, in, in a couple of the emails that has been sent, it says that if this hole is not fixed, the drain storm is not fixed, we will call it, it's, it's true structure to the street. And I'm thinking, why is it one neighbor, one person responsibility to fix something that support the whole community of this drain storm? It support the city infrastructure. So why is it his responsibility to have this fixed? They also told me they can put a lien on their house if they fix it. But my thing is, we need some help. He needs some help. I need some help. So I was asking you all to look into this and see if there's something that can be done to give us some type of assistance to get this repaired.
During public comments, we can't respond, but we've been listening and taking notes. And our interim city manager is there as well. And so we've heard you and, um, will share that information, make sure staff has that.
Okay, thank you so much. And also I wanna say, we put in several complaints and have called in and nothing still hasn't been done. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Alright, up next we have Ms. Deborah Hargrove. I do not see her in here. Alright. Mr. Ryan Kelly. And he spoke earlier. And Mr. Richard Pierce also spoke earlier and I don't see either one of them here. So those are all the public comments we have this evening.
Alrighty. Next up is the consent agenda items, which are items 10 through 15, 20, 23, and 24. Get a motion to approve the consent agenda items, 10 through 15, 20, 23, and 24. Is there a second? She said so.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item number seven. Um, motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action on the Medicare Advantage, retiree insurance, and dental insurance fiscal year 25 renewals. Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Jesse?
Madam Mayor and members of council, you all discussed this at a previous meeting. Uh, however, when the motion was made, it was only made for the medical and not, uh, Medicare Advantage and dental. And for the record, we need, uh, each one of those, um, lines of service approved by the council.
Um, from the action item, the Medicare Advantage program, the cost would be an increase of $89,400, um, that we discussed absorbing previously. And then for dental with Aetna, um, that would be an increase of $19,960, which we discussed absorbing previously as well. So that's 89,400 and 19,960.
Yes, ma'am.
Action from council staff is asking that we, um, make a motion to approve. I think they've already started moving forward based on the discussion and the timing. But we're not able, um, but need this official action. It was placed on the work session agenda, indicated action may be taken so that they could keep on the new open enrollment schedule.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Shropshire?
I make a motion that we approve the Medicare Advantage, um, retiree insurance and dental insurance for FY 25 renewal.
Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? Count, Councilman Friedly, then Councilman.
So when we voted previously, which I voted no previously, was that a misstatement? Or, or did we just intentionally vote on the medical?
No, it wasn't a misstatement. I believe the intent following the discussion was to approve all three and to absorb the costs. But when the motion was made, only the medical insurance was mentioned.
Was the 800,000 something?
Yes, ma'am.
So how, if, if this doesn't pass this evening, how does that impact the previous action? I think we assumed we took.
It would have no bearing on the medical. The medical that was approved in a previous meeting was the medical for current employees. Medicare Advantage is coverage for our retirees. And dental would be the dental, uh, for employees. So they, they don't negate each other. They were just left out of the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
I kinda have the same question. So say if this doesn't pass, could we, could a motion be made to absorb the cost of the leftover? I guess, insurance plans? Does that make sense? As of right now, we're paying 100% of everything, right?
Yes. No, it would stay the same. Um, with the city paying all of the, uh, With the city paying all of the costs. And we would, the idea would be for the city to absorb the increase for Medicare Advantage and also the increase for dental.
And how much was that? That was eighty-nine thousand?
The increase for Medicare Advantage is eighty-nine thousand four hundred. And for dental, nineteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And this would cover us for plan year that starts January first, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jesse, just for clarity, the, we're not paying one hundred percent of the employees' insurance?
No, ma'am, we're not. We have a current cost share between the city and employees. So the employees pay a portion and we pay a portion.
Thank you. I think that was the notion that was put out, that we're paying one hundred percent, but we're only paying the additional cost. That is correct. What it would have cost them to keep from putting that on them.
That is correct.
We picked up that additional cost is what we did in the past.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so, if you all remember, when we discussed this, it was on the agenda early. And then we tabled it. And to come back after we did the millage rate adoption. And then when we came back after that and removed it from the table, the motion was, and I went back and listened, it was just healthcare for employees. And that didn't trigger any, like, oh, we need to do a separate, because we could've done three separate motions, right? Or we could've done a motion that combined all three. That motion only dealt with the increase in healthcare coverage, which was a little over eight-hundred thousand dollars. So that motion has already been approved for healthcare. The other two that were included in that discussion but not included in that motion, and then we didn't do a separate motion for each of them, were the Medicare Advantage for the retirees. So the increase in insurance, so basically what they're paying now, the employees, that's already approved, so what the employees pay now, they will continue to pay the same amount. Their amount won't go up, but they'll still cover their portion. We're not paying a hundred percent. We just covered the increase. So for the retirees, what's been asked is that we approve them continuing to pay the same amount and not passing the eighty-nine thousand four hundred dollar increase in them to have the same coverage right now to them. And then for the dental, that's for everyone to continue to pay the same thing and not pass on the nineteen thousand nine hundred sixty to them. Any further discussion? Any action? Ms. Jesse, did you have something that you wanted to say? Okay.
I think there's a motion to.
Councilmember Shortshire? Councilmember Freely? Councilmember Ziegler? Councilmember Cummings? Councilmember Mitchell?
Mayor Hall? Yeah.
And passes, and so, I mean fails, I'm sorry. Motion fails.
So, let me ask you this. Since the motion failed, when can it come back? And what impact would that have on the insurance?
So, right now, I think they're moving forward, open enrollment and the discussion around there being no increase. This would then have to change all of those notices to reflect this change. Per our rules, an item cannot be re-entertained for sixty days, but there is an option to do a motion to reconsider by, as it relates to a motion that is already been moved. So if there's no reconsideration of this item, then this won't be able to come back for sixty days. And that means that all of the notices would have to be reset, reflecting the increases.
So basically, this, the retiree portion and the dental insurance are the one that's affected right now and can't come back for sixty days. Because the medical piece has already been approved.
Correct.
Question is, do that stop the enrollment? What happens now?
Madam Mayor and council, so, we would have to bring this back so that you can give us guidance on the cost share. There were three alternatives. One with the city absorbing the full increase. And then there were a couple of examples of a percentage, fifty-fifty, between the city and employees. So essentially, in terms of open enrollment, we can, we would have to stop that because you can't necessarily go forward with medical. Because if we did, then we're saying that we're not providing coverage for retirees and we're not providing dental coverage. We would have to resolve those percentages and cost share.
How does this impact open enrollment and coverage? Like, I mean, I know I'm asking you some questions that you may or may not have answered to right now, but will that mean there's a lapse in coverage?
No, ma'am. We start the new plan year in January, January first. Our benefits broker has indicated that we would need, they would need some time to get all of the data together, input the rates. Since we were not anticipating a change on the employee portion, we would have to go back, once you give guidance on that, and make that available to employees so they would know what the new rates would be. If you decide to do fifty-fifty, then we would have to compute that and give the city its share and employees their share. Same thing with the retirees. So, in terms of open enrollment, we don't really, we can push it out. We can push it out. It will be a scramble to get everything done and in place by January first. This is the middle with almost the end of October. So we would be pushing, it would be late. Because if it's sixty days, that's November and December.
Okay. So, we are where we are. I think Attorney Hartley, if you could look at rules twenty-six and twenty-seven in code section two dash two zero zero two. And as we move forward, we can come back to that later. Next item is council discussion and possible action on an emergency moratorium on all permits and rezonings in medical institution zoning district for the purpose of amending the permitted uses on the MI zoning district. Can we get a motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action?
So moved.
It's been moved improperly second in any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. So I believe it was last Thursday. There was an article that came out regarding Wellstar's decision to move forward or to allow a mixed-use development on the property that they owned, known as AMC Boulevard in Atlanta, off of Boulevard, near Boulevard, to allow that healthcare, that property that had been used for critical healthcare, to be a mixed-use development. And there would be some healthcare, but they haven't decided what healthcare would be and what that would look like. The concern is that there's no objection to healthcare being combined with a mixed-use development. But unfortunately, unlike Atlanta, we don't have a hospital south of I-20 in Fulton County at all, or an emergency room at this point, or, and other healthcare services that are needed. And we, there's a need to, I believe in this zoning district, prioritize healthcare in any future development that may happen on that site. Haven't heard from Wellstar in quite some time. Not sure where they are with what they may be doing on that site. I know they have been working with Dr. Williams and giving him some level of site control. But under the current M medical institution zoning district, there are a number of uses that are permitted that don't necessarily require leading or mandatory inclusion, I believe, of healthcare. And again, given the healthcare challenges and desert that we have for some types of, for acute care and some other levels of care south of I-20, that site is a very critical site for that. And it could include mixed use, but I think there's an opportunity to put a moratorium in place so that the current zoning district can be looked at to see if those are uses that, any of those uses we want to restrict. I also received information that there is a healthcare provider, I'm not sure who, that is looking for residential treatment and outpatient mental health services. And whether or not we would want those services performed or provided on that site when there may be people coming to the state looking for properties, to be able to provide that level of care of, moratorium would give us the opportunity to ensure that there's no permits or rezoning that happened during the time to look at the zoning text amendment, I mean zoning amendment, the zoning language for that district, to see if there's something that we want to amend. And it wouldn't just be for the Wellstar site. MI medical institutional district is in other areas, it could be in other areas of the city. So the moratorium is not just about that business entity. It is the zoning district, and that is the zoning that's currently on that property. So I've put it on to have this discussion for council. I think it's an emergency, because again, this was just announced last Thursday. And we don't know where they are, what conversations are being had throughout this state regarding the levels of care that might be considered for this site or other sites within the city of East Point that might be zone medical institution, so. Any comment? Ziegler?
I was ready to make a motion if no one else had any thing to discuss.
So, thank you for that. I think we do have Attorney Hartley here as well as Attorney Wiggins. We don't have a current ordinance drafted, but we could table this item to see if they could get something to us by the end of the meeting so that we could do, put something in place tonight to ensure that, but I didn't, I didn't wanna have a conversation with legal and say draft something without having a conversation with council to see if that was a desire. There was, there were other ones that could be looked at, right? But this will be different because this has a purpose for us to look at that zoning district. So if you'll make, if you're making a motion, I think a motion to table, if this is the consensus of council, to give them an opportunity to get something to us and we can remove it from the table. We won't be making decisions on that tonight. Of course, if there's amendments to the language in the zoning district, it would have to go through the process of planning the zoning. But it would give us a level of peace of mind to know that there's, while we're doing that, nothing could happen. Councilmember Ziegler?
Looks like there's somebody in, for discussion.
Oh, I was gonna make the motion to table it into after executive session.
Second?
Table the item until after executive session. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Please, y'all remind me. I'm making notes, but sometimes I don't even. Okay. Councilmember, get a motion to open the floor for discussion on emergency communications for chemical hazards. Councilmember Ziegler?
So moved.
There's a second? It's been moved improperly second in any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Ziegler?
Yes, thank you. So this is, I just wanted to take some time tonight to address some concerns that were brought to me on how our city is going to communicate important information to residents when there is a concern for their health, when there's chemical spills, odors, et cetera. And it's my understanding that, that earlier this year, we had a contract with a third party to come up with an emergency communication protocol. And I was looking to see if interim city manager, if we had an update on where we are in that.
Councilmember Ziegler, a couple of things. One, we do have the consultant who has helped with the drafting of an emergency communication system, or how we communicate disasters, et cetera, that you mentioned. This was given to the former interim city manager. I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I will. But I do know that some work has been done on that. And also in regards to the chemical spill that took place, I guess, in Newton County, the fire chief and also our communications department were waiting for information from GMA and other authorities, since you all know that that didn't happen in the city of East Point. So, he didn't really have any information to offer until he was able to get information from those sources. And that would be the proper protocol in an emergency like that, wanting to get as many facts as he could before he issued information out to the public. But we do have a plan that has been drafted, and I will get with our interim communications manager, and we can bring that forward.
Okay, thank you. Do we, do we have anything in place currently?
In regards to how it would be, how something like that would be communicated? If it is a disaster or... If it is a disaster or, um, something that will impact the residents of East Point, the fire department acts as our, um, emergency operations center and we also have staff who are in touch with the, um, authorities, so to speak, that would work with our current communications department to issue press releases, um, evacuation orders, shelter in place, what have you. Uh, we will continue to do what we're doing now. I believe, uh, during the, uh, areas of inclement weather, um, we issue, based on the information that they receive from the state, we issue that out to the residents, uh, in East Point. So we will continue with that. But again, um, there may be some more specific guidelines in the communications, uh, draft and I'll have to take a look at it and bring it back and we can have a more extensive conversation about it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, cause I think that, uh, one of the issues was that the, there wasn't communicate, there wasn't continuous communication until the issue resolved. It was, the only communication that came out was the first day that, that it, um, that it happened. Um, and so, you know, if, um, if we can talk about later, um, also, you know, how, um, like how long it's expected that we would get communication from the city, I think that would be really useful.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Mitch?
Uh, this, uh, to our interim city manager, uh, we, do we still use, I believe we still have like an emergency, like uh, code red, it's like a robocall system we had?
You have to enroll in, uh, code red, but yes.
And how would, I guess, can we get information out on how one would enroll on?
Yes.
Something like that. And then even then, so we have a communications department, so they would draft a message or that would go through the fire department or?
Well, the fire department would provide us with facts.
Okay.
That they've obtained from whatever state agency is responding to the emergency and then we would put it in the form that, um, we, our mediums, social media, what have you, uh, that we use. But we try not to put information out that speculative.
Right.
We try to make sure that the, um, information can be backed up with a reliable resource.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shropshire?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Jessie, um, for your update. Um, I, um, understand what you're saying when you say they have to get accurate information from the state level before they can put out any information in being that, um, East Point was not impacted by the, the spill what happened in Newton County. Um, I think we need to be careful when we go, when we cross the line of, um, getting into operation as to wh- how you want to see things done or how you feel things should be done. Um, I think the charter says the mayor is the chief spokesperson of, for the city. So any, um, communication that goes out, um, I think would be through her and, um, the fire department and the police department when giving information out. Um, so I think that is always been the process. Um, there is a code red, so if the city is in a disaster or there's some issues, then the code red call would go out, out to inform people of what is going on. But I do think that it's that, th- there is a line in getting into the operation of departments in our yield.
Councilmember Zigler?
Yes, thank you. So we were impacted. Um, you could see the haze. Um, I know I personally woke up and my eye was swollen and then the next day I had a headache. Um, and I was inundated with phone calls from, from residents who were very concerned. Um, not just about their health, but why East Point was not communicating with them. Um, cause I think we have a responsibility to communicate out, um, you know, what, what people need to do. Um, and, uh, you know, this is definitely, uh, an area that we need to improve on. Um, and this is why I brought it to the interim city manager, uh, Mr. Brown. Um, and, um, and this is something that's really important because our health really depends on, um, on these kinds of communications. Um, this is something that, um, that we really need to, um, to come up with a plan to make sure that people have confidence, um, in us and that we ha- they have trust in us that, um, that they can rely on accurate and timely information. Again, the only communication that went out was the first day that it happened and this incident took about a week to resolve. Um, so that's a very long time for a residence to go without any kind of, um, communication. Um, the county was very, very responsive in, um, in, uh, communicating out what people needed to do. Um, and so it's just really frustrating that, um, that not only did we not really act very timely, but, you know, people think that this is interfering with operations when this is really just trying to make sure that we're fixing something that, um, that really needs to be fixed. You know, I, I often worry about, um, about, um, you know, where we live and how we have other industrial facilities around us and we have had evacuations take place. So this is a very real and very serious conversation that we need to have.
Councilmember Shropshire?
Thank you. Let me be crystal clear. Newton County is what, about 20 miles? So it's, it's, I didn't get any phone calls, not saying that it was not an issue, not saying that people didn't have an issue with it, but it didn't happen here. It happened in, it happened in Newton County. And Ms. Jessie already stated that they couldn't do anything until they got accurate information. So it's not about people trusting, people don't have trust. I think it's what people perceive and the perception that people keep putting out there that people don't trust people. So let's just stop with that. Again, it is getting into operation when you want to direct someone to do things how you want them done. It was clearly explained that they had to get the information from the state. So why would the city put out any information without having any information from the state when it really didn't even affect East Point? As a matter of fact, let's be clear, I didn't smell anything. Not saying that people didn't, but I was here when they had a chemical spill here and we were affected by that chemical spill. And that was in, in early 2000 and nobody could go outside, nobody could come into East Point and nobody could leave East Point. And the, and the law office that sued the people that got the mighty back was right at the corner of Sims and Conley, right where the art building is. So I'm fully aware of how things are when there's a chemical spill cause we lived through it right here in East Point. So let's just stop with all the shenanigans. Thank.
So as the chief spokesperson of the city, I'll say this, um, when, because of where I live in the city, I didn't, it wasn't, I didn't get impacted, but I did see some comments and so we immediately shared that with our public safety, our police and fire and communications, um, to figure out what information we would communicate to the residents. Um, as was indicated, because this is a, was a larger outside of East Point, um, emergency situation, there was communication coming from the county, um, that was being distributed to everyone regarding where we were. As it related to East Point, there were no changes that needed to take place as it relates to like what's happening specifically here and the communication and recommendations that the, um, county level and other were providing, uh, was providing that information. Um, I hear the concern and desire to get more direct communication from the city. Um, and we'll think through that as we, you know, move forward. It was mentioned that an emergency communication and protocol was shared with the former interim city manager and does not been necessarily shared with us or moved anywhere. So thank you, Ms. Jessie, for being willing to, to, um, look at that and, and, and have some conversations, um, joint conversations around communication between, um, me, the chief spokesperson, as well as the other departments. Let's be clear, whenever something happens, although I'm the chief spokesperson of the city, I'm not the expert in the areas. And so I reach out to, um, if it's something dealing with water, whatever, city manager and what's the perspective from that? So I'm not just communicating for communication sake, but, um, I hear the concerns, I, I saw the, as I said, had, had I not seen the post, I wouldn't know that there were people who were, um, smelling the odors or feeling like they were being impacted here in the city of East Point, which is why those were immediately shared and then we provided that information. I think, you know, this happened, I, I feel like it was, was it Rockdale County or something? One of my, um, on our employees in my other job lives in Conyers and she was impacted from coming into work. They had to shelter in place. So a lot of that information dealt with them. But, um, looking through to see if there's other information or just shit resharing information from the agencies that are providing the information that are using the, the same outlets as we are. Um, I think for those types of situations, there's a level of coordinated communication that needs to happen. I don't think we should be sharing different information, um, from the county or people who are over like the health, um, public, the public health for our county, for our region. And so, you know, maybe it's strengthening the, um, relationship with them to be able to have a coordinated, uh, okay, here's what we sent, you all send it out. I think we've done that with some other communication. I can't remember. I think it was during COVID. The county was taking the lead on a lot of that communication and then we would go through it and pierce out like what's for East Point and, and share or have discussions around that. So um, hear those concerns and so looking forward, Ms. Jessie, to, to having conversations about a coordination of communication, but not that we are issuing statements about East Point for matters that are like being manned or addressed at different levels because they were outside the city of East Point, although impacting the city of East Point, so. Um, anything else on this item? Councilmember Zigler, do you wanna have further discussion? Um, Ms. Jessie, what is your plan for, um, you mentioned that there's something that has already been shared that management needs to look at. Um, how do you want to communicate with us or like what, what are your thoughts around that or you, do you just wanna let us? I'm also asking about something you may not, you said you haven't had a chance to, to, um, look at, so like, um, but what are your thoughts around how you would be moving this forward, I guess?
Madam Mayor, I would like the opportunity to take a look at what's been developed and consider the comments that you all have made tonight to make sure that we're covering those areas, um, that you believe are important. And we can, um, have a draft, uh, for you at not necessarily the work session in November. November, that's right around the corner, but we'd like to, uh, bring it back, uh, to you, the work session in December, if that's possible.
That, that works.
Item number 16, can we get a motion for a discussion and possible action on the facade grant program?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, this is from Economic Development, oh, I wasn't looking up at the time. Ms. Jessie?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor and members of council, uh, Macio Rogers is coming back to you with responses to some of the questions that you, uh, asked when he first presented this and I'm going to turn it over to Macio.
Thank you and, uh, city manager, uh, Aristessi. And good evening, uh, mayor and council, Macio Rogers, Department of Economic Development. Uh, the presentation before you, uh, is a, uh, follow-up and update of the facade grant improvement initiative, uh, that was brought to you back in September uh, for your consideration and approval of, uh, the plan moving forward. Of course, this would involve, uh, commercial strip centers throughout the city of East Point, uh, that you would be considering. So as a very brief, um, recap, uh, I'd like to just share a few of the things that was shared last, uh, last month and then move forward from there. Uh, the city grant, um, allocation, uh, purpose and objective of $350,000 of America Rescue Plan Act opera funds would be allocated, uh, for the commercial strip center beautification and improvement, uh, projects. Uh, this would involve, uh, exterior and repair enhancement projects. Uh, applicants can apply for up to $80,000 with a 25% match. Um, this is, wouldn't be required, but it, uh, it would be encouraged. Uh, funds would be allocated across all four wards, uh, throughout the city. Um, eligible, eligible applicants, um, the applicant must own the, uh, strip center, uh, is less than 125,000 square feet zone for commercial and be in good standing, uh, with the city, meaning that there would be no outstanding fees or anything like that owed. Um, examples of eligible improvement include new multi-tenant signage, canopies, uh, awnings, windows, doors, uh, new lighting, building facade repairs, uh, such as, um, brick siding, stucco, uh, decorative gates and fencing, uh, landscaping, decorative planters, parking lot visual buffers, re-topping and re-striping of parking lots, uh, addition of planting islands in parking lots, uh, as well. Ineligible, uh, projects or applicants would involve, um, package stores, pawn shops, adult entertainment, uh, convenience stores, gas stations, bars, religious institutions, uh, residential or industrial projects, uh, properties under contract or planned to be in 12 months, uh, foreclosure, for sale or sold would be ineligible. Uh, ineligible improvements include, uh, interior improvements, architectural design and planning services, roofs, HVAC systems, plumbing systems, repair, uh, security bars, security fencing, uh, surveillance equipment, security roll downs, construction permit fees, camera equipment, telecom and internet, t- internet TV satellite equipment. In your packets are three scenarios of small, medium and large locations. Uh, these are commercial sites. Uh, small sites ranging from 77,500 to, uh, 10,000 square feet. Uh, medium sites, uh, ranging from 18,000 up to 35,000 square feet. And the large locations ranging from 60 to 100, uh, just to give you an idea. So what we wanted to do is just, um, uh, give some thought as to the So, what we wanted to do is just give some thought as to the cost of the facade improvement effort. So, if you just take the 7,500 square feet, that very first row, to replace an asphalt parking lot with an inch-thick asphalt with the striping and the pre-washing of a building, all four sides, back, front and left and right sides, and the repainting of that building, the cost would be $52,800. If you were to take the cheaper route, meaning that you would go with the, a seal coat, much like a, an asphalt paint on the parking lot with the striping, the price would drop significantly to $38,682.60. That just gives you an idea of the, the cost involved with the facade effort. And then, of course, you can, you can go down the various rows to see what the other cost factors would be based on the square footage of the building spaces themselves. So, I won't go through those, but that is there for your, your information to, to review. The application process timeline and outreach, to keep the process in compliant and efficient, allocated Opera Funds would be transferred to the Business, Industrial and Development Authority through an MOU for management and distribution. The Development Authority would then hire a contract grant administrator paid from a portion, in this case, $30,000 of the $350,000 for administration. The completed application would be reviewed and evaluated by committee consisting of planning and community development, code enforcement, the city manager's office and, of course, economic development. Grant applications will open in January of 2025 and must be received by close of business in February. That date of the 14th is just a holder. Selected applicants would be notified by the end of February into early March 2025. All the awardees must enter into a signed agreement to receive the project award. And then, of course, the facade grant information would be placed on the city's website, newsletter, city hall, city annex, customer care, city library, and also we would have boots on the ground to distribute flyers. This would be the kind of comprehensive approach in terms of the outreach because we want to make sure that everyone got notice of this grant effort or this facade effort that we would have underway. And just to give you kind of an idea of the flow of the project, we would kick off with the funding approval based on where we are right now. The application kickoff, as I mentioned earlier, in, in January. We'd come to the application approval selection process. If it is ineligible, the project would go to the left and, of course, that application would stop. If it is eligible and it meets the criteria, it would move forward through the process to the right where we would do the application award notification. The project would then get underway. From the time that the awardee would be notified, they would have 60 days in which to start the project. And then, of course, during that timeframe, the grant administrator would be making project updates and reports on a monthly basis throughout all of the projects. And then, of course, the project would be expected to be completed within a 60-month timeframe. The next chart here is just kind of a timeline, basically where we are right now with respect to the grant funding approval. We're in the month of October. The funds, my understanding from the finance department, would need to be allocated by the end of the year. Not that they have to be spent by that time, but we'd have to have some direction in terms of what that money would be spent and how it would be spent. The grant application kickoff, as I mentioned, would be in January, flowing through February and early March. Application approval and selection award would take place February and March. Projects would then be expected to get on the way in March, early April, with that timeframe of 60 days in which to start. And then, of course, progress reports would take place throughout the six-month period, whereas at the end of six months, the project would be expected to be complete. If it's not completed, then we would expect some sort of explanation from the awardee as to what is going on with the project so that they may, in fact, request for additional time. That is the extent of the presentation at this time, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Rockton.
Thank you. Have you decided on what areas you're going to do in each ward? And what, what kind of designs are they going to do? Will they be brought back to you? Because what we don't want to see is somebody just planting flowers around to say they beautified the area. It's going to take a little bit more than just that.
Yes, ma'am. So, we would, we would look at all areas of each ward. This would be an open process for any commercial building owner to apply for. And so, all applications would be eligible based on the criteria, particularly if they meet it. So, we wouldn't pre-identify any, any area of any ward, but just to say that the entire area of that ward would be eligible to participate in the.
And let me ask you this, have you also considered to do something with, for the businesses that's downtown?
Yes, ma'am. You know, based on the, the, the amount and the extent in which the, the funding would, would stretch, you know, we could divert some of that or at least an equal portion. Instead of splitting it four ways, we could certainly split it five ways and include downtown as well. And, and I actually think that's a great idea.
I think that would be a good idea is to also help improve the businesses, to look with the businesses downtown as well.
Very good.
Councilmember Freeland?
I had a question about the grants administrator. How did you arrive at the amount of $30,000 for this role?
We considered a, the amount for the, the contract events coordinator fees that we paid for our festival earlier this year and looked at that as being an appropriate amount for the six-month timeframe and the work that would be done and carried out with respect to the monthly reporting and updates that they would provide during the duration of the process.
So, it's about a six-month?
Yes.
Activity period, so it's $5,000 a month?
That's correct. To give each, each business that would, would be awarded time to get their contractor together, get the work done. And, of course, you know, they can do it in less time, but we're giving them six months thinking that that would be ample time enough for them to, to get the project done. And if it's not, then at least we would give them the right to share with us reasons as to why they couldn't complete the project during that timeframe.
And what's the maximum number of awardees that we're looking at?
So, in this case, you know, we, we would be looking at $80,000. But now, if we include downtown, then we would split that five ways. And so, you would be looking at about 60-some thousand, maybe a little bit more, give or take.
Okay. It just strikes me as a generous amount for six months.
Yes, and, and that is based on the, the price points that we have on the, the chart here before you.
No, I meant the, the fee for the contract grants administrator.
Yes. Well, again, we, we considered that, and that is a ball point. We can certainly revisit that without a doubt. But we figured to get someone in that would be steadfast and focused on the drawdowns, making monthly reports, making sure that they're going out documenting with photographs, narrative, benchmarks in terms of the project itself, what should take place within a reasonable amount of time in terms of the completion of the project. We, we felt that that would be enough to at least hopefully generate interest or entice someone to go for that particular job duty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I was, I was hoping to see more consideration. $350,000 is not a lot of money. And when you take $30,000 to give to somebody for six months of work, that takes it down to $320,000. And we still haven't really looked at the wards, areas that we might want to focus on. If we separate downtown, that's five areas. Are we going to say that there's up to, if it stays $350,000, what is that? I think it was 77,500. $87,500 per ward. I don't know that it takes $30,000 for somebody to coordinate, following up with people about whether or not they're doing the work on these facades. I mean, there's probably some permitting or license, there's probably some administrative support already built in just from how we already handle signage or facades or things of that nature. This money is not a lot of money for the entire city. And I think when we last talked, we were really talking about, you know, are we looking at areas of focus? Do we want to focus on downtown? Do we want to, you know, if we're looking at all wards, are there key buildings or centers within the wards, how are we going to make the determinations? I don't, I don't feel like there's been really much adjustment since our last discussion. And $350,000 doesn't go a long way. Up to $80,000 per applicant, there, if you break it up into four wards, that's $87,500. That's like one applicant potentially. Like, so, I don't know how we get from here to there, but like, what is? $350,000 is not a lot of money for a facade grant program. We have strip malls and areas within the city that we already know of that could potentially be applicants, and I know they have to apply and things of that nature. And if we want to pay particular attention or ensure that downtown, there's funding there and there's a lot of activity that we're doing around there. We got the $35 million grant to connect our path to the Atlanta Belt Line and to the headwaters of the Flint like there is. But I feel like this is kind of like the same plan that we already received. And I don't know how we're really going to spread $350,000 throughout the city. Are we going to give multiple 5,000 grants to stretch the money? Or like, you know, what are we really trying to accomplish with this? Have we identified areas in the city where we think facade grants would be helpful? We already have a small business incentive for facades that's already in the small business brochure. So, I don't know, I just feel like, just like we did with the, the, the no-cost senior repair, like we looked at the waitlist, it's 49,000, 49 people and potentially $289,000. To open that up would, would be not advantageous for anyone because you're creating unreasonable expectations and we're over-promising and under-delivering. So, I agree, $30,000 is a lot of money for somebody for six months when literally, if we're talking about signage or facade, we already have stuff in our zoning ordinance. And we already have or in our ordinances that address that and that, which is already a responsibility of somebody on staff to coordinate and work together. But just to take $30,000 off the top and just give it, give it to a person to coordinate, I don't think that's what any, that's not what I envision.
Sure. Well, we, we can certainly reduce that amount there and.
I, I'm talking about get rid of, like, how is this extra staff work? We didn't, we didn't have, I mean, there was administrative funding that we received when we received the grant from the county for emergency solutions. But I think they didn't give that to us till we got CEBG grant funding. But it was for $500,000. And instead of taking money away from the 500,000, they gave us 550,000. They added money on top of the, the request. Instead of taking money from for administration, six months, $30,000, that's $5,000 a month. Who's doing that kind of work that can't already be covered? I mean, but like, that can't already be covered, because we're not, this isn't something new. It's not a new thing, it's a part of what we do. So, I see Councilmember Cummins slide on, so I'll, I'll stop there. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I know we're going to send the grant out, I mean, we'll send the, we'll send it out for, for anybody to, to be eligible for it. Have we even considered, I mean, I know it's $350,000. Have we just considered looking at those areas that, I don't necessarily, I can't, I don't want to say like council or just a, a body at East Point that says, this is a, like the, over in Washington Road where Sammy's Cheesecake is? So, I mean, if not, if we just picked these areas and this is what we're going to go in to do, could, could they do that? Or you're?
Well, we certainly wanted to keep the, the process as fair and as possible by making it open to everyone throughout the entire city. And so, we, we didn't want to pre-select thinking that there would be some bias with that process. So, we would get the, the applications in and based on the criteria and the responses that we got, we would make the best possible selection based on those high visibility areas that I spoke about last time. Corridors such as Washington Road, Camp Creek, US 29, these are highly traveled in and out corridors coming to and through the city. And we would look at that, but we didn't want to, to limit it to that just because, again, it might be considered a pre-selective process. And so, we would eliminate others. But in this way, we open it up and, and let those who are interested in applying based on the facade funding that we have available, apply. And then, we make the very best selection based on the, the information that we got, the applications.
Okay, I was just sort of looking at it as a city initiative. And we just, the city's going in and we're fixing up certain areas. But I mean, I understand what you're saying. You want to try and make it as a fair process as possible by letting everybody, anybody that wants to, you know, anybody that's eligible for it to apply, and then you go from there. But I was just thinking, I mean, because I don't know, I, I understand, you know, we want to divide the money out equally. Is that, that, they're going to put it in, they're going to, it's going to be spread out throughout the, throughout each ward, correct? And even dollar amount?
That's what I'm asking, because it doesn't say that it's going to be an even dollar amount, right? Like, we just, we still are just saying it's $350,000 open to everybody. And we might have four or five areas. If we separate downtown, that would be five areas. If you do it equally, that's 70,000. But like, we don't have those assurances or.
Okay. And that's why I was saying, that's why I was saying if, 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 if we took it from a perspective of a city initiative, and these are the areas that, that really look bad, we're going to go in and we're going to do, you know, painting or, I mean, some minor repairs. But I don't, I mean, I don't know what it all would entail, but I'm just saying, if they just, if you just made it a city initiative. And I mean, you know, we, we know the areas that look bad, that really need to be, you know, spruced up. So, if they went in and, and, you know, went that way, I don't know, it's just, just a thought.
That's, if, if you want to target.
I don't, yeah, no, 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 I'm not saying, I don't, I don't want to, I'm just giving a suggestion.
Sure, I understand.
I'm not trying to muddy the water anymore than what it is. I just, you know, but I mean, the thing is, we're trying to beautify the city.
Right. Well, one thought is that you, you take the whole $350,000 and focus on downtown, and that's one option. Or you could, again, divide it up in five ways, and that would be another option. So, you know, we'll do it however you, you deem appropriate, you know, based on the city initiative approach, without a doubt. And that's, that's one thought if you want to consider it that way. And that's, that's one thought if you want to consider it that way.
All right, thank you. How are you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, let me just add that we cannot, just to help Macio out, select, we need to come up with non-discriminatory, non-arbitrary criteria and let whoever wants to apply, apply. If you want the, you want to gear your results to get people from downtown, then that needs to be a criteria. Have to have an address in the downtown. Or if you want there to be, it's spread out amongst the wards, then it needs to say one to two winners per ward, right? So, we need to establish that first, prior to anyone applying, prior to this being rolled out for the council to approve criteria that is non-discriminatory, non-arbitrary, but put in there where you would like to see your desired results. So, if it's downtown or if it's all the four wards, you put in language that requires them to meet certain boxes to be eligible for a win. In addition, what, to Councilwoman Strachey's point, you know, what type of project will you do that will beautify, enhance the property? We say, planting flowers is not enough, right? So, there are things we can write that are not business-specific, that will help you gear this, this project or this, this grant in a way that will have a much bigger impact, seeing as though you do not have a huge pot of money to work with.
Councilmember Strachey and Councilwoman Ziegler. I'm sorry, did you have anything else? Yeah, Councilmember Strachey and Councilwoman Ziegler.
Thank you. And I was going to say, what happens if, let's say, the, one of the players is in the ward, don't apply for it, then it's not...
They don't get...
Yeah, so, and I guess we would need to know that, how will the information be distributed to get them to apply? Because we know, we know all the areas that need to be fixed up. My thing has always been, if, if you're, if it leaves, like Atlanta, Atlanta, you go down, come up the low, you're leaving it low, that's your gateway to Atlanta, dillow. So, you know, the family, the Wayfield Grocery Store is heavily visited and traveled, the Plaza, you know, the Plaza across the street, the Family Dollar Plaza, which they use a lot for shooting movies. You know, the Piggly Wiggly is an area that needs to be updated. You know that where Sammy Cheesecake on Washington Road is a area that needs to be beautified. So, how are you going to get the information out there to it, to the owners of the Plaza? How are you going to encourage them to apply for the grant to get it fixed up? And what will they be doing besides just planting flowers or blowing off the driveway? It has to be something that's, I guess, unique or that's going to enhance the look of that building or the plazas to make it look good, to draw people to that Plaza to make them want to go there because it's in better shape. For its downtown, that would be the same as downtown. How are those businesses going to improve the look to make people want to come to those businesses?
Yes, ma'am. So, the application itself would have, they would provide a descriptive or description as to what they would be doing to improve the beautification of the Plaza itself. So, we would look at that, we'd look at the location, we'd look at the overall impact of what they're saying, and that course becomes part of the documentation that we would oversee during that process. In terms of getting the word out, again, we would focus on the city's website, we would put it out in a weekly newsletter, we would also, ourselves, go out, boots on the ground, and distribute flyers. We wouldn't be able to hit every place in the city, but we could certainly hit downtown. We would also make sure that we put this over in our customer care facility where people pay their bills, we would have it here out in the lobby, we would have it over at the annex, city annex as well. And we could also insert it in the utility bills if necessary. We would also distribute at the city's library. So, we're thinking about all public places and spaces that we have throughout the city that we would get the word out on a regular basis and do that consistently in terms of leading it up to, leading up to the application kickoff.
Where I have a problem with, you're putting the information out there, but you're not actually reaching the people who own the plazas. The people who own the plazas are not the people that you are reaching out to. If you're going to put it in the newsletter, you're going to go put it on, put it in city and customer care, that's not the owner of the Plaza. Those are the tenants of the Plaza. How are you all going to reach the owner of the Plaza to get them to apply for the grant? That would be a phone call, reaching out to the company.
Yes, ma'am.
To notify them about the grant, to notify them that this is what the city has to offer. And I like the idea of maybe we need to come up with criterias around it to say X, Y, Z, what needs to happen, because who then determines what that plan looks like? Would that, that would be economic development. I mean, so, we do need criterias, and we do need to figure out how we're going to get the actual owners of the Plaza to apply.
Yes, ma'am. And we know that many of the owners are not even within the city of East Point, so we would work with their managers on those sites and inquire who the owner is. The application itself would require that information as well. And then we can certainly, via phone calls, make, and email, make direct connections or contacts, because we know that, in many cases, and we run into this all the time, the actual owners of these spaces are not in the city, or they may not even be within the metro area itself. That would be the, I guess, the approach that we would have to take in those cases, but that is, is something that the application itself would require, who the actual owner of the property is.
Councilmember Ziegler.
Thank you. And not to throw a wrench in this conversation, but, you know, understanding that there's not a whole lot of money to go around, I feel like we need to have a laser focus on this project. And I would prefer for the money to go to the downtown, the plazas in the downtown district overlay. That way, we have a laser focus on that, and we make sure that, that our downtown areas look really good and spiffy. The other areas, sounds like that they have like a chain attached to them, and, you know, we do have codes that, that they need to adhere to. And I feel like that, you know, if we feel like a particular plaza needs some sprucing up, you know, they, they're responsible for, for the look of their building. And so, that's why I would prefer to have a laser focus on our downtown district overlay, and that way, we can, you know, make sure that this is a success.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Quick question. So, are we giving this money to the business owner and it's their job to go out and find a contractor?
No, so, the business would be required to hire their own contractor, and we would work directly with the contractor. We would have no tangible exchange of money to the, to the business.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, can we work with contractors that haven't gone through contracts and procurement? If the amount is over the twenty five thousand, should we be trying to approve, do a request for qualification or something similar to what they did for the seniors and veterans program to, I mean, to say that the businesses select the contractor and then we pay the contractor? We could deal with fifty different contractors if everybody, assuming we give out, you know, there's that many grants, like, that just sounds like a lot. And it doesn't ensure the quality of the work or who they're picking or whether they're bunt, like Attorney Wiggins?
Yeah, I don't like that portion of the program. I would prefer it to be like a reimburse-like grant where they hire whoever they want to do the project for which they were awarded the grant money for, and then we reimburse them for what they've paid, you know, up to the amount that the grant was awarded, as opposed to us being in business with a contractor, provided we didn't select it, but, you know, the business owner selected it. But you could get into some procurement issues if we then are paying the contractors directly.
This still needs a lot of work. I don't know if, I can't recall what the criteria were for selecting it. I hear the city attorney saying that we need to make sure that it's open and we're not just, but like, there's a desire to potentially focus on our downtown, there's a desire to like leverage, I guess, be more intentional about how we, or what we do with this program, and maybe it'd be helpful, Ms. Jesse, if staff on the operations side could talk with, work with legal, and maybe based upon what's been shared tonight, like, bring us something and may address some of these concerns. With the limited amount of money, again, thirty thousand dollars is way too much for somebody to coordinate this, like, I don't think it's that much paperwork. And we probably already, again, have staff that already has responsibilities and duties for some of this work anyway, because it's dealing with facades. But is council okay with that, like, staff or operations working with legal and taking all of this into consideration to try to come back and bring us something that has like more clear criteria, like, how we're using them, like, addresses the concerns and maybe looking at downtown, like, all of that in a way that is non-discriminatory and open, as the city attorney mentioned, but, yeah. I see head nods, am I right?
Yes, ma'am. We can bring that back.
Okay, no objections from council. Maybe the November work session?
Given the fact that we've got to have something so that the funds can be committed before December 31st, or we don't have the funds at all.
December 31st of this year?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, can y'all do November 4th? Like, I just...
Madam Mayor, we've worked together, we've talked about this, facade grant, we have had a meeting about it. Macio and his team have done the research to look at other jurisdictions who have rolled out similar programs using ARPA funds, and that have been successful. So, I'm happy to continue to work with them. I'm not saying that to say, oh, we've talked and that's it, but I just want to let the council know we have, we have talked about it.
So, are our criterias similar to what other cities are using?
It was a county, in fact, so, yes, it is definitely a mirror, if you will, of what has occurred in another jurisdiction. You know, the option of downtown versus all the wards, it was a county, so it didn't have that issue so much, there is not a downtown in a county. So, that's something we would need direction from y'all on what to do. I, I, I think that we need some, some, what do you want? We'll take it, we'll write it, we'll bring it back based on what you've said that you want as a council.
I, I think, I mean, we've had several conversations and discussions about desires. I think the concern is ensuring that we're not being discriminatory, that we're not running afoul of any legal requirements, but also, like, having us interact with potentially fifty contractors, like, this is, that...
Right, that piece, that piece is an easy tweak, but as far as recipients of the grant and where they will be located, I think that's a piece that certainly would require the council's direction.
I mean, it could be both and, right? Like, it could be determining how much of the money you want to set aside for it may for downtown and then the rest for the wards, right? Like, I can imagine with representatives from all four wards to solely focus on one area when there are potential areas in other cities, I mean, in other wards, might be challenging, but maybe there's a prioritization or, you know, allotting more money for downtown in a non-discriminatory way, and then saying for each ward. I feel like when we communicate a program, people have to know, they're not actually applying for up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they're not necessarily applying up to eighty thousand dollars. Whatever is left, if you break it up by ward, there's up to that amount, right? Depending on where your business is.
So, so, we could say, right, that a maximum award of, I'm just making up numbers, twenty thousand dollars will be awarded in each ward. A maximum of up to fifty thousand dollars will be awarded to businesses within the downtown. It could read something like that. The criteria likely would not be different amongst the wards, could be a little different for downtown. Say they want to put in a sidewalk or, you know, something like that for connectivity to the martyr or something like that. So, we can bifurcate it, if that's the will of the council. You kind of then will have two different programs under one umbrella, the downtown facade grant and then the ward facade grant. I don't think that will create an issue if, I know I heard from one council member, they wanted to focus just on downtown, but now I'm hearing to maybe do a both and, which is, which is fine.
And maybe the maximum amount each person can get is still the same, but we just say out of three hundred and fifty thousand, there's a hundred thousand allocated to downtown, which leaves two fifty divided by four, I can't do math really quick right now, you know what I mean, like...
I think we're saying the same thing, I get it.
So, November 4th?
Okay.
And we already vote to, we have already voted to approve the money for this program. We just are coming back on the how, I think we did it for both the senior and the, this program, so I think the funds have already been committed, it's just working out the And maybe you all can bring that back on November 4th. It's good to know that you have looked at all of these other things and, I mean, if we're, it's not being discriminatory, I think what the ask is from council is, do we want to focus on all areas, make East Point, I mean, make downtown a separate area, so instead of just the four wards, there's five areas of focus? And then if we do five areas of focus, do we then want to, five divided by three fifty is seventy, right? Yeah, we want to say seventy thousand... Yeah, we want to say 70,000 per area or give more to um downtown. And I think what would be helpful maybe tonight, we can work on the money and stuff later, but do we want to separate downtown as a separate area? So instead of four wards, it's the four wards plus downtown. So it'd be five areas in which we'd be spending, spreading the money. Or is the majority of, I, I guess the other question is, are the majority of businesses in Ward A and B like in the downtown area? Cause then if so, that's like kind of double allocation in that way, right? Yeah, the, the heart of most businesses are in downtown and some of downtown is in A and B now, majority A some B. So if we do 87.5 per ward, that's kind of still getting to the downtown, right? Because, but those are, that's what I think they need tonight. We want four wards, equally split money. We can always talk about the money when they come back, but um they need direction around, is it just four wards or do we want to separate downtown? Councilmember Trump turn.
Um, I think it's still include the wards as well as downtown.
So it'll be five areas?
Mm-hmm.
Out of council member. Then council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think still at the end of the day, the whole thing is going to be driven off of the applicants. I mean, cause who knows, maybe nobody, maybe no one in C even applies for it. You put all the information out there and I mean, it's still up to them. You can like leave the horse in the water, but you can't make them drink. So we'll put it out there, let everybody know. So I think at the end of the day, it's all going to be driven off of the applicants that we have. So it may be best, I think, just say East Point. That includes everybody, all the wards, downtown and everything. And then once you come back and you look at the applicants and see what it is, what applicants you have, then you can do, like, cause I mean, I mean, it, it may be an issue, it, it may be a situation where 80,000 goes to one ward and 30,000 goes to another ward. I mean, we just don't know. Like I say, it's all really going to be, yes, it's going to be basic, it's going to be applicant, application driven. So let's just open it up citywide. So wherever you get the people and then you can come back and sit down at the table and once you look at what you have, then you can sort of, you know, figure out how you're going to divvy the funds out. Are you?
I'm totally fine with opening it at citywide as well, the four wards plus downtown. It, it just that when we, I think there, there is a distinction though because if we're talking about, for example, the Wayfield Plaza, that's owned by, you know, a large property management or retail sort of company. Much larger space if you're talking about improving a parking lot downtown. Those are going to be generally small businesses or small property owners potentially. Now, maybe someone owns whole chunks, but um, so I think we just have to make sure that we're accounting for the distinction in how the, the funds will actually be used. Um, but I'm, I'm fine with opening up across the city.
Okay, so then if that's the case, are we okay with what we shared tonight? I, I, I think the maximum amount shouldn't be $80,000 per person. I mean, per, per applicant. The money's not going to go far. Potenti, it could potentially not go far, let's say it that way. I mean, it could if we don't get any 80,000, but who we want to say up to 20,000 or up to 50,000 or just?
Can it be equally shared?
So based upon all the applicants?
Mm-hmm.
I'm so sorry. I am so sorry. So the dilemma is if we get an application and this applicant has an amazing idea, they want to paint, they want to fix the shingles, they're resurfacing, they're putting up new lights, right? And the max award is um $20,000. And then you may have another applicant um that is only doing, you know, the bare minimum. Um, you can then only pay, right, a bare minimum. So if you, if you do equal amounts, you may not have equal amount of project, right? So it needs to be an up to as opposed to um everybody will get the same thing because everybody may not be doing
Mm-hmm.
the same quantity or quality of work that would garner them the same amount as applicant A who's doing a whole lot.
Real fast. And when we're talking about up to amounts, just because we really don't know, maybe if you could set up some sort of parameters based on the square footage of your business. Cause like, um, you're saying like the Wayfield Plaza, you're, if they want to do something, if they want to like paint the whole plaza, you're talking about a huge, huge building as opposed to the flower shop is downtown. So maybe we'll look at something for, if your bill, if your business is 10,000, I mean, what, 1,000 square feet, X amount of dollars, it goes up to this amount. So i- if, if you say we're only going to give 10,000, if they have $15,000 and you put the other five within and, and we're good with that. But maybe, you know, based off of the square footage and you'll put in a couple, you know, different ranges and in that way. Cause I, I think, you know, if base, cause I mean, you want to try and, you want to try and help as many people as you possibly can. So if we do it based off of square footage, then I think that kind of, you know, keeps you in that. That's as fair as I can think about, you know, how we could go about doing it.
Yes, ma'am. We have a range of square footage in the spreadsheet, just to give a, an idea, yeah. But um, and so we have it broken out in small, medium and large. And the, the, the small goes up to 10,000, the medium goes up to 35,000 and the large goes up to 100,000. Uh, that's correct. That's for the small.
Sorry, not to belabor this, but I, I guess my assumption was that part of the application process was the submission of a proposed budget. So they should know what they want to do, have some idea of what's, what it's going to cost as part of the application process. But we're saying we're going to give you this set amount, even though your project may not even require that. So are we asking for a proposed budget and project plan both as part of the application process or no?
Well, what, so what initially we did was to state that we, if we were going to take the approach of um distributing the money equally between the wards, up to $80,000 per ward. And uh based on the applications we get, then that would determine really whether or not they met the 80,000 or less. Uh, there's no guarantee that they would get that amount, uh, but it would be centered around what they're planning on doing. And then of course for, for the committee that would be um, um, rating these, these applications, um, it again would, we would look at impact, overall impact, uh, visibility, um, uh, location, uh, you know, what they're doing, uh, adhering to the, the criteria that we've set forth. And some of that could be um, again, the building itself, the uh windows on ends. It could be a combination of things that they might be doing based on the size of the actual building itself.
Just my two cents, I think part of the application should be a proposed budget based on what they say they want to do. And I think then that gives the committee some flexibility in, okay, this is reasonable and, you know, let's see how many of these we can fund, but
Yes.
that's just my thoughts.
Great.
You want to come?
I promise this is the last time. And, and I'm thinking about like the small, smaller businesses that, I was going to call taxpayer, the strip mall businesses that are in there. And they're what, no more than maybe 700 square feet or whatever. I think if you went smaller and, cause I mean, like I said, I, I think what, what Councilmember Freely said, have them submit a budget. Once they submit that budget, if you have like something that's 700 square feet, I mean, the most you give is $5,000. I mean, because if you put a limit on there, I guarantee you everybody's business, if the max is 20,000, everybody's going to have $20,000 worth of stuff they want to have done. So if we, I think first, you, you have them submit a budget. You make it, um, let those dollar amounts be smaller, if you're going to even put a dollar amount on there. Cause at the end of the day, we want to see everything that we have, you know, everything that's in there. And then from there you can, so I, I don't know if you put some sort of disclaimer or something on there up to a particular amount, you know, based on this square footage. I think we should give it, give a more wider range because I think about when we talk about downtown businesses, a flower shop or a hair salon may be only be about 500 square feet. So I don't think that a 500 square foot business should be in there with a 10,000 square foot bit, you know, business. So once they put their budget in there, you see what it is that they have. Like I said, then you kind of come back to the table and really see just how much of these, how much, how much of this money you can actually divvy out to, you know, we want to try, we want to try and help as many people as we possibly can. So I, I like the idea to submit a budget and you just sort of see what it is. And if, maybe if you put something based on the square footage of their business, we'll, we'll give up to this amount. Cause like I said, my hair salon is only 500 square feet, but up to 10,000 square feet. Y'all giving 20,000, I'm going to do $20,000 worth of work here. So, you know, just to kind of give it more of a wider range and then just sort of see what it is that they're trying to do and from there, how much money you're willing to put towards it.
Okay, so I think they have the different square footages and amounts. It sounds like we keep it open and restrict people by the square footage so they won't apply for more than what that range is. However, it sounds like the part about who we're paying and who gets the money and how it's done. I mean, reimbursement grants sometimes are challenging for small businesses because they have to put the money out first to get it back. Um, I'm okay with coming up with some level of payment plan related to work being done, whether it's a third upfront and then, but yeah, so that we're not totally out of money. Like you can't just say, here's somebody and we give you the total amount, right? So I agree on that. But whether we're contracting with the, we're giving the funding to the applicant and I think looking at those other programs to see who got the money, was it the applicant or was it contractors? I think contractors is a little bit more dicey, but are we okay with that around something upfront? Not, that it not be reimbursement that we pay, so the contractor has to agree to our payment term, whatever we come up with for the program that would have required them to do work to get paid of sorts. Are we okay with that? Councilmember Mitchell, councilmember. So um, I think that piece. Um, making sure it's not discriminatory and then if you feel like the all that's fine, the payment and those schedules, and if y'all can get that to us on November the 4th, then we could go ahead and just open it up. And I mean, I think it's a good point, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse and anticipating a lot of things that may or may not even happen. And if we get presented with that challenge, you can always bring it back to us for us to consider or something like that, so. All right, November 4th, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Item number 17, motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded and a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Councilmember Freely.
Yeah, I had a quick question on this one. Um, 17 and 18 are both for the purchase of Ford vehicles.
Mine is 17 only.
18 appears to be a Ford vehicle? Oh, okay, okay. So, all right, my question was, why would we not buy all from one dealer? Would that potentially realize a cost savings or is there a reason why we're going to two different dealers?
I, I refer to the fleet department to purchase a truck. That's what he, that's where he told me to go. And what he's doing, he's standardizing his fleet from Chevrolets and all different types to standardize it to Ford, all Ford.
Okay. All right, thanks. That was, that was my only question on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
To approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that item 17 be approved. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries item number 18, Councilmember Freely.
Yep.
Motion to open the floor for discussion. Well, you can either make a motion open for discussion, possible action or a motion to approve and we go in on discussion, however you want to do it.
Motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action.
Okay, so moved is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded and we open the floor for discussion and possible action. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, Ms. Councilmember Freely.
Yep, so on item 18, um, it's for the purchase of two vehicles. And I looked in the, the details and the invoice and it looks like the base price of the vehicles is sort of half the final cost with all of the extras. And so I'm curious if you can provide any context on how did we end up paying double the base price?
Okay, so um, I'm looking at invoices now. Uh, we added the, what is that, the Fuel Flex uh for 2350, extended uh fuel tank, uh, the four by four, that's definitely what we need, crew cab vehicle. Uh, as I'm looking, I don't see anything, anything particular that you want me to, to discuss for us pricing.
So the, the most expensive extra is the Flex Fuel, is that?
The what now, sir?
What's the most expensive option on those that we've selected?
Uh, okay, the five, one is the five point V, V8 engine. That's what we need for off-road. Uh, we went with the lower package, which is 2350. They had a higher package for 29, uh, extended fuel tank uh for $410. Uh, four by four, super crew cab, uh, 5,500, um, regular cab with 5,200. Uh, we went with the lowest package on the crew cab of uh, it was 8,765. The other package was 9,995. Uh, limited, limited slip resistant, there was only one option, 1345, daytime running lights, $95. Uh, I'm thinking, I'm looking at, trying to see what, what changes can we make in that, you know?
I'm not suggesting that you make any changes. If you feel that all of those options are absolutely necessary for the duty, the duties that these vehicles would be required to do, I, I just raised my eyebrow that we, we were sort of doubling the cost.
Yeah, I mean, we, the spray and bed liner, we can relu, we can reduce that, uh, reduce that. But everything is, it's pretty much what we need. We added the LED running beacons for um, hazard lights, that's for, you know, after hours. So when we pull it over on the side of the road during work, uh, we added that. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this, some, everything on here is what we normally would order and what we would need for our department.
Okay, uh, that's fine. Thank you.
Anything else on this item? Yes, bless you.
Bless you. Uh, motion to approve item 18.
Properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item number 19, Councilmember Freely.
Uh, motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action.
So moved is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. For is open, Councilmember Freely.
Thank you. So my question on item 19, uh, also on this invoice, it, it includes a number of power cords? And I don't know exactly what this equipment is, so I just, I'm just asking for an explanation. But the power cords are $300 each?
Yes, that's a, it's like a wire harness for each, uh, for each uh Tripsaver, COM Gateway. So for each device need a power cord, so that's, that's the vendor's price. I, that's, we, this isn't, at one point, when we first purchased these Tripsavers, we did our best to try to wire it up ourselves, we was very unsuccessful. So it was a delay, it was a delay with us getting these Tripsavers installed. So therefore we have to purchase the wire harness.
So can you describe what these power cords are? Are these massive power cord or?
Uh, no, it just, it's, it's, it's. Uh, no, it just, it's, it's, it's like a stitching cord that has to be powered, that goes from the device to the transformer to provide, to provide power.
And they cost $300 each?
Yes, sir.
Is that normal in, in your experience?
Uh, for this piece of equipment, last time, yes. I mean, for, for us, it would be. I'm acting with that, this is a, this piece of equipment is only sold through SNC Electric Company. So this is, there's no other place for me to get this. I couldn't search for it on Amazon, like, there's nowhere else for me to get this, this wire harness.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We need a motion to approve or take action if that's the desired, council. Councilmember Ziegler?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of 24 Tripsavers and 10 Gateway Tantulas modems.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, we already did, item number 20 is on consent. Item number 21, motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action. Is there a motion?
Motion to, um, open the floor and possible action.
So moved, is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, the floor is open, I think, councilmember Shropshire, you don't want to add questions on this one?
I did, and, and my question is, um, we're installing, what is it that we're, we're installing, pavilions?
Yes, ma'am. So we did, um, construction design in 2020, and I think Colonial Union was like 22. Um, this was a capital approved item. The last part of the construction was put in these shaded pavilions at those two parks.
So are we gonna install pavilions in the rest of the parks?
Yeah, that's, that's, but yeah, that's exactly, yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. Get it up to what we've done in the other parks.
So, is so, have we installed pavilions in the other parks or is, are these the first ones that we're doing it in?
No, we have pavilions installed. So some of the renovations that I have done had the pavilions in it and I had the funding through CDBG. And I got this funding to finish out those parks that I'm highlighting.
So let's, let's, let's go to Somna Park.
Yes.
What about that? Because I know that the pavilions and the benches was in pretty bad shape. So have y'all upgraded those?
Yes, so, um, it's a lot more comprehensive, obviously, than what I'm bringing tonight. The connecting points between the upper park and the lower park is in really bad shape and it's starting to erode. So, the plan is to-
Colonial Hill?
No, I'm talking about Somna.
Oh, okay, okay.
Can we talk about that one now? Because that's the next agenda item. Okay, so in regards to the pavilions, yes, it'll be matching what we've done in other parks.
Okay, and, um, because I know, and you know, I've, I've said this for quite some time. We've been doing Colonial Hill and Brookdale Park for quite some time and it's almost like we've forgotten about the other parks in the area. But, um, I'm not gonna hold it up. I just want to make sure that each park, Center Park, Somna Park, Retan Park, Sykes Park, they're getting the same attention as we've given these parks.
And we, we, I feel like we've done a good job of that. So some of the things like with Brookdale Park, for example, is some functioning things that's wrong. And I'll be bringing it to council next month, but we've tried to spread the wealth with the improvements. Uh, we did a full renovation on Egan. Somna Park is a very large park, so we've been incrementally improving in those spaces. We most recently did the tennis court, we're about to correct the steps over there. Uh, we're about to make some more improvements, uh, to Grayson Park of the softball field. I'll be bringing it next month. Uh, we're gonna be improving the playgrounds in every park that we have with ADA accessible equipment and getting it up to code. So it's just been a process of it, but I'll be bringing it in the next coming months.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, no worries.
Madam, may I make a motion that we approve, um, item 21?
Properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item number 22, councilmember Shropshire.
So my question was answered.
Open the floor.
Motion to open the floor and discussion on item 22, Somna, um, um, construction to rebuild the stairs connecting to, um, Somna Park, Dog Park and the upper playground.
So moved, is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, the floor is open, councilmember Shropshire.
So my question was answered, um, so you are, are you installing new playground equipment? What do you-
Well, that'd be on next month, but I'm working with, um, a company called Game Time and we'll be adding auto sensory and ADA accessible equipment to all of our parks. You know, if it's approved, but I'll be presenting that on next month.
Okay, okay. And are you installing the new barbecue grills or?
Yes, those are amenities, uh, but it's under the threshold, so those things would be put out in the parks, uh, pretty much all of them.
So you, they'll be new?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's, that's my question, thank you.
All right.
All right, any other questions?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item 22.
So moved, is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. We are now, item number 23 and 4 were consent, 25 was removed. We are now at item number 26. Do we need to discuss this in executive session or publicly?
Um, the, the resolution was provided to the council, hopefully, I think I got it to Madam City Clerk in time. Um, we've already discussed this, I think. This is just the documentation to support me signing the joint representation letter. So I think it's appropriate for, um, just the, the vote to be had to give me the authority to sign that.
Item 26. Okay, yes, the resolution is attached to the agenda, the City of East Point Resolution, Cleveland Avenue Metropolitan Parkway ART Project Joint Representation Agreement with Marta and Parker Poe. Is there any action? On this item is a request that we adopt that resolution.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, I think in an abundance of caution from a timing perspective, gonna ask that we, um, consider amending the agenda to add the Comprehensive Transportation Memorandum of Understanding with, um, Memorandum Agreement for Development of the Flint River Gateway Trails Master Plan among the partners of Clayton County College Park, East Point, Haightville and Aritropolis, Atlanta Alliance. Um, and the reason I'm asking for the amendment is because we already directed staff on June 3rd to work with the ARC, I meant to work with Aritropolis to come up with the MOA. But we never actually approved the MOA. So, we have been thinking that that approval was garnered, but we hadn't received the approval yet. So we can do a motion to amend and, um, if you all have your laptops. Legal has looked at it with them, all of the other jurisdictions have signed it. Um, they're waiting on us and we started early to try to get ahead of it and then didn't realize we didn't have.
So Madam Mayor, what's the motion?
It is to amend the agenda to add Memorandum of Agreement for the Development of the Flint River Gateway Trails Master Plan among the partners of Clayton County College Park, East Point, Haightville and Aritropolis, Atlanta Alliance.
So moved.
There's a second. It's been moved improperly seconded that we add the stated item to the agenda. It would be item number 27, Madam City Clerk. Um, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. You get a motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action and then we can have the city attorney explain it.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded that we open the floor for discussion and possible action on item 27, um, regarding the MOA for Flint River Gateway Trails Master Plan. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, city attorney Wiggins, if you could, just briefly.
Certainly, if you, if you remember, um, I believe, uh, Mr. James from Aritropolis was here to discuss this, um, cooperative agreement between the jurisdictions already named by the mayor. And it's for the purpose of planning and developing the Flint River Gateway Trails Master Plan. Um, all of those entities, Clayton County, College Park, us, Haightville, and then Aritropolis, um, would be working together, um, to do some, uh, stormwater management. Well, to put together a plan first for the purposes of stormwater management in the Flint River Trail corridor, um, and then also a master plan for some trails. Um, the group will identify some strategies for implementing whatever comes out of the master plan. Uh, some pedestrian connectivity is also an area that the group will look into. Um, in the MOA, there are responsibilities for ARC and then also responsibilities for the individual jurisdictions. Um, there'll be an executive committee, a project management team, and then coming out of that would be a project management, management plan. Seems to be a great opportunity to get involved with, um, the other jurisdictions to ensure that the headwaters, which are in our city, are protected. And then you bring some activity around it, um, whether it be a trail or some other type of attention to the headwaters.
Also, this is the project where we are a part of the $65 million grant, regional grant. And of that, about 35 million is coming to East Point to connect our East Point path downtown to Atlanta Beltline and over to the headwaters of, of the Flint River. And so, um, definitely a good, the, the purpose of this is so we can start planning before the money comes. So we don't wait until the money comes to start planning. You're right? I don't really think it was. I think there was a, is there a funding component on this? Okay, this is what they needed us to prove though. So everybody, there's one MOA that we'll all sign off on, that's passing around, so. Once you all approve it, I'll sign. Um, so if there's no further discussion, and we get a, um, motion, uh, motion to approve the Memorandum of Agreement for the Development of the Flint, Flint River Gateway Trail Master Plan among the partners of Clayton County College Park, East Point, Haightville and Aritropolis, Atlanta Alliance.
So moved.
There's a second. It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, um, comments from council? Any comments? Any, um, councilmember Shropshire?
Thank you. Um, I do want to comment on the resident that have the sinkhole in the yard. I know we've had, in the past, we've had residents to have that issue and it's because of the, um, I can't think of what it is. The, whatever goes through their yards is corroding and falling. And, and it's the sewer line or infrastructure that's causing those sinkholes in the yard. And I know in the past, we've had residents to come down and speak on it and, and, um, the city has had to make decisions on what to do. Uh, I did speak with the resident, I did go by to see the sinkhole in the yard. It is, um, it is, it's a hole, it's dangerous. Um, if we could have somebody to look at it, to see what is it, um, is going on? Because I know, you know, those pipes are corroding and those pipes are possibly coming from the city, I don't know, but that's something that the city will have to look at. But if, if we could, if staff could do that, is at least go look at it, take a look to see what's actually going on. Uh, second, I will make this announcement, on October 31st, we will be having our 10th Annual Halloween Festival for the kids. So bring all the ghosts and goblins out to enjoy the festivities. It's from 5 to 8. And it is right here on the lawn. We'll have, um, bounce house, face painting, all kind of games that the kids can enjoy. And like I said, this is 10 years we've been doing this. And all the kids come out and the front lawn be full of kids. So it creates a safe space for the parents and the kids to come to, um, where they can come and have fun, get candy and just enjoy themselves. So that's October 31st from 5 to 8, thank you.
I'll be really quick, the, um, Healthy Point is presented a lunch and learn on eating for your blood type this Thursday from 12:30 to 1:30 PM at, um, Jefferson Park Recreation Center, 1431 Norman Berry Drive. Lunch will be provided, um, but just more information around different ways to choose your diet. Um, and so as a part of the, um, Mind Body and Soulful Circuit Saturday, one of the instructors talked about, um, eating towards your blood type, there was interest in it. And so the participants wanted us to have a workshop. So again, that is this Thursday, October 24th, from 12:30 PM to 1:30 PM, Jefferson Park Recreation Center, 1431 Norman Berry Drive. Lunch will be provided. Do we have any, um, executive session items? This is rhetorical, right? So, how many from legal?
We have six total, four legal to a real estate.
Four legal to real estate. Counsel? No, um, and then remember when we come back, we have to remove from the table.
I'm sorry to say that.
So, uh, two real estate, four litigation.
Motion to, a, a, motion to go into executive session for two-
Real estate.
Real estate and four-
Legal.
Legal.
So moved, is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries when recessed. Motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene?
Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Y'all pass that down some way real quick. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We said after executive session, do we go ahead and take the action on the two items and then remove it off the table? Or remove it off the table first?
Uh, motion to remove it from the table.
Before we take action on the two executive session items?
Oh, no, two of them.
Okay. Need a motion to proceed as discussed in the claim filed by Mr. and Mrs. Hall with the City of East Point. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. In the matter of Darren King versus the City of East Point, you know, motion to proceed as discussed in executive session? As it relates... Proceed as discussed in executive session as it relates to the settlement of the matter. Is there a motion?
No.
Is the sec...is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. We need a motion to remove item number eight from the table. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now that it's been removed from the table, do we do a motion for discussion and possible action? We still in the discussion?
Motion for discussion.
Motion for discussion and possible action on emergency moratorium on all permits and rezonings on the medical institution M1, M I zoning district. But is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The city clerk placed at our chairs or our dais area, a proposed resolution drafted by the city attorney tonight during the meeting for us to consider as it relates to imposing a moratorium on the M I zoning district for a period of 180 days. Previously, when we've had moratoriums in place, if there's a need to extend them, they can be extended prior... Or they can be extended or re-implemented either prior to the expiration or even terminated before. But like, this gives 180 days initially for the moratorium. And I will turn it over to the city attorney regarding a couple of changes noted. And then, if council has any questions or discussions as well, we're in for that, too. City Attorney Wiggins?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So, in Section 1, 1A, Section 1 lowercase a?
Page 3.
Thank you. The first sentence reads that it appears that the City of East Point ordinance at the M1 district regarding permitted uses is in the process of being reviewed and revised. Well, that was premature. It's not in the process. There's a desire to review it and potentially revise it, which hints the moratorium. You have to forgive me for some typos as I was amending an existing mor... A previous moratorium to make this one work for tonight's meeting. So, that is going to be revised to say it appears that the City of East Point desires to review and revise its zoning ordinance at the M1 district regarding permitted uses, period. Subsection B of that same section, it says the city's ongoing revision, and it's changed now to say that the city's potential revision, because it's no guarantee that when the text amendment to the M I district comes back, that you will approve it. So, that's been changed. That's the only two changes that I recommend you make if you do a motion to approve.
So, again, in the motion, it would include adoption of resolution, and you read the title, with Section 1A being it appears that the City of East Point desires to review and revise the zoning ordinance at the M1, M I district regarding permitted uses. And one B, the city's potential revision of its M I district. And the rest of the language there. Questions or further discussion from council? So, it would be a motion to adopt a resolution... We would need a motion to adopt a resolution to impose a moratorium on rezonings and use permits and building permits for a period not to exceed 180 days. Would that allow potential for extension?
Yes, 180 days, max 180 days at a time.
Oh, so if this moratorium, it would have to be a new one? Okay. A motion, it would be a motion... We need a motion to approve, adopt a resolution to impose a moratorium on rezonings and use permits and building permits for a period not to exceed 180 days while the city considers changes to its medical institution, M I district of the zoning ordinance to provide for the purpose of the moratorium, to provide for findings of fact, imposition of moratorium, the duration of the moratorium, to provide for an appeal process, to provide for severability, to provide a penalty, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Is there an appeal provision? I don't recall saying an appeal provision. You said 2G?
2G1.
Oh. Where vesting has occurred? Okay. Councilmember Friedley?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as just stated, or should I read the whole thing again?
So, you could read the title, and then the changes, including the changes to 1A and 1B.
To approve resolution to impose a moratorium on rezonings and use permits and building permits for a period not to exceed 180 days while the city considers changes to its medical institution, M I district of the zoning ordinance to provide for the purpose of the... To provide for the purpose of the moratorium, to provide for findings of fact, imposition of moratorium, the duration of the moratorium, to provide for an appeal process, to provide for severability, to provide a penalty, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, including... Do I need to read out the revision? Revisions to Section 1, findings of fact, item A. To read, it appears that the City of East Point zoning ordinance at the M I district regarding permitted uses...wait. The...sorry.
It appears that the City of East Point desires to review and revise the zoning ordinance at the M I district regarding permitted uses.
Correct. And B, the city's ongoing revision of its M I district in the zoning ordinance...
The city's potential.
The city's potential...
Revision.
The city's potential revision of its M I district in the zoning ordinance requires that a limited cessation of the application and issuance of rezoning applications and use permit applications and building permits.
The motion is their second. It's been moved and properly seconded by the title of the ordinance, and that Section 1A should read, it appears that the City of East Point desires to review and revise the zoning ordinance at the M I district regarding permitted uses, and one B, the city's potential revision of its M I district. And the zoning ordinance requires that a limited cessation of the application, issuance of rezoning applications, and use permit applications and building permits. Any discussion? There was one question I just had. Oh, if we could also allow for... Does it...is it already in here? That we give the city attorney the ability to correct any clerical or scrivener's errors? We could make that a part of the motion?
And further?
Because I didn't see the language in there.
Right, so now we can limit to the current motion that's been included. So, we're going to make a motion to amend the current court. The current motion to add that, that the vote on adding to the motion and that vote on the whole motion.
So, Councilmember Shropshire, you said so moved. Could you just say to have the city attorney to address the scrivener's error? Say that part. Is there a second to add to the resolution the ability of the city attorney to address, correct any scrivener's or clerical error? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? I did that correct? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Oh, wow. So, that was just to add the scrivener's error? That was a substitute motion? Not amendment. If it was amendment, then we'd be done. Right. We amended before adopt...for approving. Okay, so that was a motion to add to the resolution the ability for the city attorney to make any clerical or scrivener's errors. Okay. Now, the whole resolution contains all that language for 1A and 1B and that. So, now we need a motion to adopt the resolution for the... As amended. Correct. And second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I mean, we amended it to reflect that, so... All right. I believe that takes care of all of our items. Oh, motion to approve executive session meeting minutes. Can I get a second? It's been moved and properly seconded that we approved executive session meeting minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Hold on a minute. This is on the motion to approve the minutes, executive session meeting minutes. All those opposed? Motion carries. Oh. I didn't write that on my paper. Thank you. All right. Yeah, that's a whole nother pill. Can you make sure the city clerk have it? You can...okay. A member can introduce the ordinance in written format. And motion to amend the agenda?
To offer for sale small portions of the city right of way in accordance with OCGA 36-37-6G to provide servability, to repeal conflicting ordinance, to provide an effective date, and for other lawful purpose.
To amend the agenda to include that ordinance as item number 28. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to move to amend the agenda to add the ordinance just read, title just read. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Is there...because it's an ordinance, it would need either two readings or a motion to waive the first reading first, then the adoption.
Make a motion to waive the first reading?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we waive the first reading. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, we need a motion to adopt the ordinance reading it as...
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to offer for sale for a small portion of the city right of way in accordance with OCGA 36-37-6G to provide for servability, to repeal conflicting ordinance, to provide an effective date, and for other lawful purposes.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. There...that's everything. Okay. You had a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Goodnight, East Pointers.